Welcome, welcome to our Poetry Town Council meeting of our beautiful town of Poetry, Texas on November 15th, 2022. We welcome you and want you to feel heard, valued, informed, and connected to your town and its council. We welcome diversity of opinion and want minority views as well as majority views to be heard. We also respect, appreciate mutual respect despite opposing views. Your opinions, suggestions, and comments in favor of or against the topic are welcomed. However, your questioning and interrogations will not be acknowledged. This is a town council meeting and not a courtroom. At this time, I need to remind the public that a disruption of this meeting may be considered a criminal offense according to Texas Penal Code 3813 and 4205. You must be signed up to speak during the meeting and stay on topic according to state law. To preserve the order and decorum of the meeting, any person who makes profane, slanderous, threatening remarks or becomes disruptive during the meeting will be asked to leave or may be escorted out by a peace officer and given a citation. At this time, Darrell Watson has volunteered to lead us in the pledge and invocation. Please rise.
While, join with me on the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'm honored to offer this opening prayer, and I feel more comfortable being seen just as a man of, just, just as one of God's men rather than as a man of God, because I'm filled with flaws and I learn that at a deeper sense every day. So please be patient with me because God is not finished with me. Let's seek the Lord in prayer now. God, you know our hearts. We stand in your judgment, and for that alone, we seek your guidance. Help us to bind ourselves together, that we would not sin against each other or against you. Give us a renewed heart to find the joys of building stronger relationships with you and with each other. Let our right to speak be for constructive with beneficial goals primarily while not sacrificing the right to stand firm for matters that bring improvement to our town. Lord, help us to see faults in ourselves so that we not speak in haste to show hatred toward our fellow men or those who serve us. God bless the men and women who serve this town, and may this gathering be a testament of your power in us all. Amen.
Amen.
And if you'll excuse me.
Thank you, Darrell.
My wife had surgery today, so I'm gonna have to go take care of her. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Darrell, very much. And our prayers are with your precious Paula. Okay, so Ms. Evy Anderson, our volunteer clerk, is here to take roll call.
Councilman Simeon White.
Here.
Councilman Terry Fowler.
Here.
Councilman Mike Jaffe.
Here.
Councilman Brian Vincent.
Here.
Councilman Tom Anderson.
Here.
Mayor Tara Sinkovitch.
Here.
Okay, form is confirmed. Thank you, Evy. Okay, so on items of community interest, we want to thank Councilmember Fowler for picking up a metal door or off the roadway at the, at a very impromptu time. Thank you so much. Thanks to Councilmember Vincent and Kevin Sinkovitch for taking off work, for tractor work that needed to happen prior to the rains. Thanks to Councilmember Anderson for installing water lines and a flagpole, and Andre Vasquez for covering trench work at the town hall also prior to the impending rains. We do have the unofficial results of election, Proposition A regarding settles and use tax. I just got updated today. 452 votes were for Prop A, that's 57.4 percent, and 336 against, four, that's 42.7 percent. The total votes counted were 787. So this, the unofficial results are that Prop A passed. We will have a special meeting for canvassing the election on Tuesday, November 22nd at 6:30 PM. Okay, at this time, I'm gonna go over the financial report, October end. We had a beginning bank balance of $56,502.02. We had donations from a franchise fee reimbursement of $159.51 from a citizen. He received his donation or his franchise fee reimbursement, then cashed it and donated it back to the town. We also received the third quarter CRS and Titan fees, and we have third quarter AWT franchise fee listed here. We had some expenses, office supplies from Office Max and Walmart, checks paid. We paid $13,342.56 of checks 1111 through 1290 for the FEC reimbursement fee. The Kaufman City Elections was a total of 577.53. There were some electrical supplies needed, that was $96. The contract labor for our secretary, $821.25. The initial mowing had a lot of weeds and poison ivies, so we had, our volunteer was highly sensitive to that, or his wife was, so we let him do that, $150. The reimbursement, let's see, we had the election publication, Bay Temple, the election, or electric reimbursement, $50 for each meeting. The roads project, Hunt County, the approved roads project for $3,900. They're still waiting on it to dry out. It seems like every time it dries out, they may get another rain, so that's still in the works. The ending bank balance is $45,390.41. I will say that out, after all the outstanding bills of $9,549.92 come through, that leaves a bank balance of $35,840.49. We are supposed to receive funds this week from Card Recycling, one of our vendors, for $1,460. In about six weeks, we should have between $15,000 and $19,000 in revenues more before the end of the year. Number H, on our consent agenda, we have the minutes for September 30th, 2022. It was the town council meeting and the budget. I said the 20th, yeah, the 20th, September 20th? All those in favor of accepting those as written? Raise your hand. Okay, and that passes unanimously. Okay, for the minutes of September 27th, 2022, the workshop and special town council meeting on that consent agenda. All those in favor of approving that is written. Raise your hand, please, and that passes unanimously. Okay, and the minutes for October 18th. We did have a volunteer type those up and very appreciative of that. We did have an amendment, I think on Friday, but that was submitted and put online later. So it was at the town hall posted, so apologize for that hiccup there, but it is a courtesy that we put it online, our first time, so we're pretty excited about that, but again, there's a learning curve to that, but it, all of this was available at the town hall. So the minutes of October 18th, as amended and sent out, all those in favor of accepting that?
I think we might need to move that one to the regular.
Okay, so that's been requested to move to the regular agenda. We can do that? And we'll just name that item A. Okay? All right, so regular agenda, item A. Any discussion now on the minutes for October 18th?
I had a citizen recommend that since we moved the item from the agenda to the beginning of the agenda, that we should renumber it to A. We moved the item from the end of the agenda to the beginning of the agenda, so the recommendation was that we moved that to item A, relabeled as A, so that would be my motion.
Okay, I don't have a problem with that. Any other discussion? All those in favor of accepting these minutes from October 18th with the recommended amendment, moving item 13 to, say, item A, all those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Okay. Item number one, the regular agenda, discuss and take action on the renewal of the interloco agreement with Hunt County Road related work, allowing for a two-year agreement. And last year, we had a one-year agreement, so, and it seemed to work well. Yes, so, go ahead, Evy.
If you're signed up to speak for item one, you need to sit in this order, please. Robin, and then Scott, and Tracy, and Dale, and Shelley. You'll come sit over here, please.
So in order to facilitate a rapid, a more rapid meeting, we are trying to eliminate the walk-up time, so if you've signed up to speak, please go ahead and sit on the deck, and that way, we don't have to wait on you to just come up here, so, thank you. All right, so we're gonna go ahead and council can discuss this. The only change is, so last year, Tom and I worked on this with the Hunt County, and we massaged that, and so the agreement is basically that we come to the table suggesting the, well, actually, in writing, putting what materials we want, and it's worked really well, actually. We can now say that, hey, we want new fresh asphalt, we don't want the substandard material, so we want the better material, so we, we come to the table saying, hey, we want fresh new asphalt used, and then they come to the table with their equipment and their personnel. So, and they've been very good to work with us and get that done in a timely manner, so we're very appreciative of that. So that's our tax dollars at work, and so the only change we've made to this agreement then is to make it two years instead of one year. I do not know for sure that they will go for that, but I'm hoping. So, any other discussion?
Well, if they don't go for it, can we put a contingency that we will accept the one, I would prefer a two-year as well, but can we put a contingency that we will accept the one year so it doesn't have to come back for another vote?
I would be very in favor of that.
So I so move that if the Hunt County does not accept a two-year, then we authorize a one-year as well.
One or two-year?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
Okay, so we do have some citizens. Robin Followwell, you're not on deck. I don't see her. Okay? According to State Code 2840, if you miss your time, you miss your time, we don't make that up, so you know. All right, Scott LaHoo, is that how you pronounce that?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Tracy Hibbs?
Yes.
Okay, Dale Bryant?
Yes.
Okay, Shelley Smith? Okay, all right, so any other comments on this one? Okay, so all those in favor of accepting the renewal of the interloco agreement with Hunt County on road-related work, allowing for a one or two-year agreement, raise your hand, please. So that passes unanimously. Getting stuff done for town. All right, so number two, discuss and take action on needed amendments and payment of the June 22, 22 legal invoice.
2022?
2022.
I'm mishearing numbers tonight, I think.
Robin, Chad, Tracy, and Dale.
Okay, so the legal invoice is the amount of $5,011.28. They did discount it significantly by about $3,000, so I looked at a few things and I thought, you know, there was a few items on here that, a few hundred dollars here and there, and then, but, you know, and they discounted it by $3,000. I don't know that I can really justify even bringing that up, so. Any other thoughts on that? Okay, all right, we have some citizens. Robin Followwell, she's not here, I don't see her. Chad. And Evy, you have the clock.
Chad McFarland, 1985, OFM 986, so hopefully this isn't, doesn't come off as an interrogation, but I'm just trying to understand, you're saying that this month's invoice is around $5,000? Is that with the $3,000 discount that you're talking about, or is it, is it $2,000? I'm just trying to figure out how much money y'all are talking about paying this month?
The invoice was $8,053, discount roughly, let me change out, discount for June was $3,042, the monthly bill was $5,011 plus change.
Okay, and this is for June, so we still have July and August, and then have we received September? Because I know they were, have they gotten back to where we're getting a bill on a regular
They have not, and this is something we'll be discussing with them next week, but in talking with other towns, apparently, this is the way they roll.
Okay, so we've got, so we're talking about paying $5,000 now, and then the last question, I'm just trying to figure out, how much more do we have sitting out there that y'all have received invoices on? If I remember correctly, last month, they were saying there was like $14,000 sitting out, so we're talking about paying five, is there nine left, or is there?
Yes.
Actually, this July is $4,254, August is $5,132 plus change, so it's $9,300.
We've got about nine left after, after paying that.
Roughly, yes.
Okay, and so that's July and August, and then we haven't gotten September or October yet.
Yes, sir.
Just trying to figure out where we stand, so, okay, that's it.
Yes, sir. Tracy Hibbs?
Yes.
Dale Bryant?
Yes.
Okay, so that brings up a point, they, even though they've discounted it quite a bit, he did say in the last meeting that you, quote, "pay what you want." That's very enticing.
Yeah, pay what you feel.
What you feel is right, so.
Obviously, we can't amend the agenda, but why aren't we paying them all? Why aren't we, why aren't we paying June, July, June, July, and August?
Because of cash flow. And, and because of his statement that we didn't have to. Why pay it if we don't have to?
Well, I would also like.
I don't agree with that at all.
I would also like to see how next week's meeting with them goes before we pay. It would be harder to get money back than it would be to wait to pay, but they've sent us an invoice, I understand. If that's the full amount we need to pay, then we'll pay it, but I would like to make sure that through the discussion that we're gonna have with them, that that is the, the amount that we're going to need to pay. But I'm. I'm in favor of pursuing more discounts, is what I'm saying.
Oh, okay.
I guess my opinion is, you know, we ought to pay at least one. I would agree with you, if we had the money in the bank, we should pay them off, but since we've got other expenses, which we talked about last time, at least pay one.
But, but y'all understand, we have fiscal responsibility as this town, so if we pay one this month, we accrue one this month. So are we gonna take a mindset that we're gonna consistently be 45 months behind on limits?
No, it's not my opinion. My opinion is when we have the cash flow, we should pay it.
So, so with the recent financial, well, we have $35,000.
Right, but.
So we have $14,000 in debt, that, that gives us a net $21,000. Is that not cash flow?
Cash flow positive, yeah.
We have other expenses, though, as well, so, and they didn't, you know, he, as, as he stated, they're not hurting for money, they, you know, they recognize, in fact, when Patricia was here, she said, yeah, you guys have, you know, all kinds of time to pay, so I think this shows good faith that we really paid last month, we're gonna pay this month, we're gonna continue to pay them something, and, you know, they have other significant towns that have, you know, some have millions, so they don't necessarily need our five grand or even our 15 grand.
Right, I agree with Terry, though, on the basic idea, if we want to get these paid off, it's just kind of a goal for ourselves, is we want to get caught up on these. You know, I don't think we should do it immediately, since we are discussing how much for all of them, and we're gonna have some discussion, and hopefully do the legal review that we pushed off till the next meeting. I kind of expected to see it on this agenda, I should have just requested it, but, you know, reviewing legal might also have an effect on how much of a discount we're asking for.
So we do have an executive meeting, just so you know, for next week. We did vote, the council voted to have an executive meeting regarding their, kind of an annual evaluation of the attorney firm and their services, so that will be on the agenda next week.
Right.
So if you all want to postpone that pending that, then I understand that, if, or if you want to go ahead and approve this one, and then.
I think we should go ahead and approve this one. My personal opinion is we should approve this one, but again, I would like to see further discounts on the others.
The others, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so we've listened to our citizens, and we discussed this, so all those in favor of paying the $5,011.28?
I need a motion first. I'll make a motion.
Oh, okay, okay, so Jeff, Councilmember Jaffe makes a motion to accept the $5,011.28. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and that's seconded by Vincent. All those in favor? Okay, we're gonna take a five-minute recess. I'm gonna have to consult with the attorney. She was saying that we could just.
Strike it, are you okay with that?
Okay, medium resumed, thank you. We just had a little interruption from our attorney. All right, so, you have the cards, thank you. All right, so number three, discuss and take action on the amended ground lease agreement with Longhorn Organics LLC for the town hall parking. So I think Councilmember Simeon White worked quite a bit on this, I worked on it myself. We did send it off to Pam Liston, our new attorney, still with the same firm, but new attorney with the firm, and it was, I guess, we also have here tonight Holly Dempsey from Longhorn. Go ahead and stand up, Holly. So she's owner with her husband of Longhorn Organics, so she's here. So we had a concern on item, just this, just this afternoon, we had some concern on item liability and indemnity on 24A, and she's suggesting that we strike, strike a little bit and then add a little bit, so it is, A, only to the extent allowed by law, landlord shall not be liable to tenant or tenant's employees, agents, guests, patrons, or invitees for any injury or death to person or damage to property on or about premises. And then, and then this is the part they're striking, because they were concerned that we would be liable for something that happened to one of Longhorn's people, and that we shouldn't be liable for that, so, so we struck the language, and tenant agrees to identify landlord, defend, and hold landlord harmless from any lost plane damage, cost, or expense suffered or incurred by landlord by reason or any such damage or injury, including to the extent the same arises from the negligence or misconduct of landlord and or landlord's agents, employees, or contractors. And then she added in, I believe, tenant shall not be liable to landlord or landlord, employees, agents, patrons, or invitees for any injury to person or damage to property on or about the premises to the extent caused by the gross negligence or intentional misconduct of landlord, landlord's employees, agents, and/or contractors, and then struck out the last line. So that was massaged, and I think then, the other, Terry, was it the one?
4B.
4B, the 4, 4B.
The question about it was about the expenses imposed upon, that could be tied into number 11, which was struck from this document, but that document, that's where the taxes were written.
Okay.
So 4B could be interpreted that that would be, that would be included, so she advised that we just struck 4B out.
So on 4B, she's, so Pam is suggesting that we strike 4B entirely, and so, subject to legal review, well, see, she's, and then she's saying that it can be addressed if the motion is made to approve the agreement subject to legal review, so.
And then number eight, and Holly's here, so she could speak, and it would be good enough, but it says paved, so tenant is permitted to build parking and paved access only. I don't really like the word paved. It goes on to say that, that we're not required to pave it, but to me, paving's concrete or asphalt.
Well, I think we discussed that, I think via email, not you, but via email, and we were kind of going around with, I think, Simeon and myself and Holly and their attorney and our attorney, saying that we have the right to pave it if we choose to, but we don't have to.
Okay.
And that means we could put gravel, we can put asphalt, we can put concrete even, but we have the right to, and that's kind of why that was left in, and they, we took it out at once, and then like, no, if we, you know, I don't know, we have an option to.
Okay.
I think it also keeps us from being able to build a building there.
Yeah.
The only thing we can do is create a roadway and parking area. We couldn't put a permanent structure there.
Right.
I also asked Pam about 26H, that's, that's the clause of, if it, if it ever went to court, where would it be held? And I don't like that it, it has text written in it, and she said that she would look at it, and that's part of that for legal review. Being both parties are in Kaufman County, it should stay within the county. That's typical when you see parties in different counties or different states, but because of that, we're in the both, both in Kaufman County, I think, I think the wording state is going to be a little too narrow.
Okay, that's easy enough. And you want to replace it with Kaufman County?
Well, county's sufficient, because we're both reside in the same, you could specifically say Kaufman County.
I would say county.
If Longhorn South is out of state, you know, they're probably gonna want to redo that part of the contract, but for now, it doesn't.
Okay.
Doesn't seem to fit.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Yeah, now, the copy I have may have gotten revision, but on page five, paragraph 12A, triple I, the new liability for workers' comp, is it a million or is it 500,000? There's a discrepancy in my copy.
Oh, 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 it should say 500,000.
Okay.
Yeah, no, sorry, that, so the number got changed, but the wording didn't, so it should say 500, correct.
All right, and on page six, paragraph 15A, four and five, I think those are misnumbered, they should be double I and triple I respectively, and they don't seem to fit.
I, double I, triple, and then.
I, B.
Right.
Okay.
Should be I, B.
Yeah. And they don't seem to fit under the definition of default, which is what the chapter heading is. Seems that item B was removed, so those may have needed to be I and II under B, so, because there's a, there's a section removed there.
And that's for matifols, so that can be massaged, okay.
And then paragraph 15C references 15B1, and there's not currently a 15B1, so.
Gotcha, so there needs to be a D there to make it sense.
Yeah.
Okay, that's noted, okay. All right, so on deck, we have, I guess Robin's not here, Kevin's not on deck, and Scott LaHoo?
My question, in fact, to the gentleman who listens to the garden projects.
Yes, sir. Chad McFarland?
Yeah.
Okay, Tracy's not there, Dale. Dale Bryant?
Dale Bryant, 11139 County Road, 246. In the package, we were given a copy of the lease, or this version of the lease.
It's on the table, I apologize, the volunteer helped, I think left it out, but it is there.
Okay.
It's there in that folder there.
A couple of things, is it still in the form of a general ground lease?
It is in a ground lease agreement.
And there was a provision in there where the landlord, of course, has the right to use that property and any other future invitees, correct? Or tenants, correct?
Yes.
So. We're, so we're ground leasing the land and at some point potentially in the future, someone else can also ground lease that same land for a different use?
I don't, I don't think they, I don't think they could. I don't think there could be subsequent lease on that lease.
Very vague where you could potentially do that.
We did massage that language from the previous agreement, so it was cleaned up quite a bit. Yeah, it was cleaned up.
It's in here, Dale.
Then on the insurances, you have general liability and workman's comp insurance that you're required to cover. And that just means any invitees, labor, workdays, Brian, you show up with your tractor, are you covered with workman's comp?
Yes.
Personally?
Am I personally?
In other words, I think it says any subcontractor, volunteer worker, anyone has to be covered with workman's comp.
Right.
You're covered with workman's.
No, no, we're saying that work, that it's covered by the.
By the city.
By the town, yes.
So the city is covering the general liability and the workman's comp for any invitees, subcontractors.
Volunteers.
It says employees, leased workers, temporary workers, volunteer labor.
Do we have a cost for that?
Yes, sir, that's on the agenda item, the next agenda item.
Okay, how much was that?
It's not that much more, but that is on the, in your packet.
So we're paying five hundred dollars a year plus the insurance is actually costing us more than, right?
It is, yes.
Also, there was a provision in the lease, if I remember correctly, where it could be terminated by either party at any time?
With a hundred and twenty days notice.
Now that's a renewal, a hundred and twenty day notice on a renewal.
I think on the revision there was. I don't recall, but you think it was a hundred and twenty?
I thought it was, but.
It was a hundred and twenty days to notice.
For the renewal, right.
And the first initial term was a five-year term, as I'm seeing, that's still stayed the same.
Yeah, so early termination.
I think it says thirty.
Either landlord or tenant makes, it says law, but may terminate the lease at any time for any reason by giving not less than a hundred and twenty days' notice.
So that, but that's not much, I mean, if the city is going to put improvements on that ground.
Time is up.
Then.
Your time is up, thank you Dale.
Well, I'd like to call on Mr. Dale as an expert to finish what he said. He was the one who sent the other form of agreement that I sent out to the council through the secretary. So calling on Mr. Dale as an expert in this field, having worked in it for a considerable amount of time in this kind of agreements. Did you have anything more?
Okay, so. Okay, so if we're going to allow that, that would have to be, the chair would have to decide that, so.
Right.
Dale, I don't have an issue with you, if you have anything else to add. I'm going to give you about thirty more seconds. But please come up to the podium, thank you.
They should be in the form of an ingress egress agreement. In other words, we're just simply using their driveway to access our property. Okay, but as opposed to a ground lease, it's a totally different world, I'm just, all I'm saying is be careful because I think your legal advice may not have a whole lot of experience with this. And the one other big issue was where you, the city, could put a sign on that east, so we could potentially put up a sign there. Hey, a hundred and twenty day notice, you got to terminate, get off the property. Why would we put a sign on someone else's property when we own the property right next door?
It doesn't obligate us to do that, and I would not recommend that we put it on their property, I would recommend we put it on our property.
Well, that's saying, they're saying they're not prohibiting us from doing that, so we have an option to do that, but I agree with you, but if we're.
As a citizen, I'd prefer to see it removed.
We can put a sign on wheels.
So, so Dale, you're talking about ingress and egress, and typically those are easements, not.
No, it's a, it's a.
So you're talking about some kind of.
It's a, it's a, you have the right to ingress and egress over their property to get onto your property.
Yeah, because easements stay with the property, and that's why the first one got shut down, so you're asking for a hybrid almost.
Not a hybrid, really, actually this is more in tune with what you're really trying to do. The ground lease is what's with, normally you would not ground lease and access. Because if you're, but the problem, the problem that I see is you're ground leasing the land, but you don't have full use.
Ingress and egress wouldn't allow you to park on it though.
Well, you could have an ingress egress with.
But we are. Okay, so thank you Dale, appreciate your input, thank you. I think because we have the differences of being able to put our own parking gravel or even concrete on it or even a sign or all kinds of things, I think that's why they chose what they chose. Shelley Smith?
Okay, I would say that unless we have a solid signed and notarized.
Name and address, please?
I'm sorry, Shelley Smith, one eight seven three oh F N fifteen sixty-five. Unless we have a solid signed and notarized agreement with Longhorn and everybody has signed off on it, I strongly suggest that you don't move forward with any of the upcoming agenda items that have to do with the town hall storage unit and as it is, because if we did, if we got locked in with the septic is in a certain place and the ramp is in a certain place and whatnot, then the building is locked where it is. Right now, as it stands, if you had to, you could move that building to another part of the property and create a parking lot on the property, and then we don't even have to worry about somebody saying, hey, you know, the contract is void. So that's my two cents, any questions? Are you finished? Yes, ma'am, okay. No questions? Alright, Patrick Smith?
Patrick Smith, one eight seven three zero F N fifteen sixty-five. I have a lot of opinions and advice on this contract that I'm not going to be able to offer in three minutes. So I'll hit the highlights, and when I get told to sit down, you'll be able to find out the rest of my concerns later at courthouse. This document is riddled with typographical errors. It has numerous vague provisions. It has numerous ambiguous provisions. It has conflicting provisions. And I find it astounding that with both sides represented by attorneys, somehow we're going to have a meeting tonight to vote on accepting this contract. That reflects a severe lack of business judgment. So let's start with section one, where it's talking about what does the tenant get as a result of this non-exclusive agreement? That paragraph says, the landlord may determine whether a use by the town is prohibited, but it can only do so if it does not unduly inhibit the uses of the tenant. So that implies some kind of a reasonable standard. But yet that same section says in very toned-down language, however, the uses are defined in section nine of the lease. So let's go take a peek at section nine of the lease. Now instead of some kind of a reasonable agreement and a reasonable exercise over the use of the property, it says landlord's use of the premises shall be considered paramount in the event tenant's use and the landlord's use of the premises shall conflict. No reasonable standard, no unduly inhibit, the landlord's uses are paramount. Section three, there's a flagrant error in the document that I don't know if anybody in good faith could sign off on it. It says the tenant shall have the right to extend and renew the term of this lease for five successive and additional period of five years upon the same terms. Can anybody explain to me what that sentence actually means? No, you can't, because it's not based on good English grammar. Section four, rent leasing guarantee. This leasing is intended to be a net lease, it is the intention of the parties that the landlord shall receive the rent set forth herein. Is my time up, or do you want to carry on?
Is that your time? Okay, your time's up.
Okay, thank you, I tried to help.
Any other council comments?
I was actually going to bring up, that was the section I was going to bring up specifically, nine C. Some of these edits I did make, including striking the page, by the way, but I cut back in there. And I would like the council to just look over that very closely because it is a little more vague and it just, there's a lot of trust in that, and I just want to make sure that that's understood. I looked over it, and it just is saying pretty much reasonably that they're not going to keep us from doing what we want to do, and we can't reasonably stop them from doing what they want to do, but it is very vague. And so just taking some time, that's kind of the key paragraph in this entire agreement, at least to me. And as long as we're all comfortable with it, and as long as there's, you know, trust going both ways, I would advise passing it like it is. But if there's some hesitation in that field, I would advise us either striking this or relooking at it.
So on that one, basically they're just saying, hey, from time to time, let's, we can have that lease agreement handy so we can refresh ourselves on what that means, so.
Keep in mind though, it says at the landlord's sole discretion.
So that is their driveway, and that is their driveway, and, you know, so I think in fairness to to all parties, we need to acknowledge that is their driveway, so as tenants, we don't want to impede their driveway in any way with what we do.
No, we don't, and you know what, I should have prepped it by saying, I really appreciate you working with us on this, and I, you know, it's for y'all's land after all. And I wouldn't want the town to take priority over the use of y'all's land. So I really respect it, I just, as an editor here, I wanted to clarify that to everybody here, clarify it to the council because this is kind of the paragraph everything else lies on, in my opinion. And I just didn't want, I didn't want to sign off on my edits without making that clear.
Yeah, but what I have a problem with in that is that we're talking about vague language and trusting one another, and if we, if it was a matter of trust, we wouldn't need a contract. The owners could sell, we are definitely going to have a change of leadership over here, over the years here. It needs to be as specific as possible so that we will all know that what we agreed to. Secondarily, I am definitely not a legal expert, and I appreciate Dale's comments about the ingress egress agreement. I would at least like to take a look at what that looks like and see if it better fits what we're doing here before we sign off, it may be more appropriate for us and for Longhorn. So I would, I would like to have that opportunity.
That's the document that the secretary sent out on my behalf, the ingress egress agreement.
When, when, what's that?
Week ago or something.
Okay, thank you.
And what did you, what did you think about that?
We've put quite a bit of work into this, I think it might have been a better base document starting off. But we could make this work as well, would be my.
We've put a lot of work into this, I get that sentiment, but that's called the sunk cost fallacy.
No, that is true.
I would like to make sure that we're working on what we should be working on and not making something we've, and I admit, everybody's put in a lot of work and I appreciate the work that people have put in, but I want to make sure that we're doing the right thing for ourselves and for our partner in this.
Yeah, that's a fair point. I just think, I think that they could work both ways. Looking at that, knowing somewhat about this, I'd say I think both documents are acceptable. There's more than one right way to do it in this scenario, but that's probably the most straightforward way, would be an ingress egress agreement.
To that point, Brian, I wonder if we don't maybe allow another pass on this, to your point of, and allow Dale and maybe Patrick, if he's willing to help us out. I mean, I don't think, Patrick was saying throw it out, he just said there were some issues in it. I'm assuming they could be corrected, and I wonder if rather than us non-lawyers and then depending on lawyers who may have different purposes, if we engage their help to get another pass on this, if some of that cleans up and then look at it next meeting. You know, the other thing, Tara, I'd be interested if she's willing to hear from Longhorn, just to kind of hear their heart on this thing. I mean, we're representing them, but we haven't heard them, I wonder if we.
Holly, would you mind stepping up?
Yeah, just so you have a face and a name, and I mean, we.
She's here, she just flew in, what, last night? To the cold weather.
Name and address, Longhorn Organics, fifty-six ninety-one, County Road three twenty-three. I appreciate the debate, I appreciate the discussion, I think it's helpful for everyone to look at all possible options for a lease that works for both parties. I will say, we, you know, started with an easement, have moved to a ground lease because Longhorn had trouble getting this passed our own attorneys, to be fair, and pass the bank. We have a mortgage, of course, on the property. And so, you know, looking at it from a larger picture, from the other half of the table, it would be challenging, I think, for us to go back to the bank and the SBA, who also had to sign off on this, and have them do that again. So I do understand there's an ingress egress option. I do think it may prohibit being able to build the parking, maybe the challenge. So it is a little bit more complex than just accessing the driveway, because of the parking piece.
So.
My question is, is the bank reviewed this, the latest on hand, have they reviewed it?
Yes.
Did they approve it?
They did, of course, they're aware there's typos and other things that need to be adjusted.
Oh, yeah.
So they sent it back for, you know, final approval by our attorney.
But the essence of it is okay with them and their attorneys?
Yes.
And that's American National, right?
Yes, sir.
So, so the SBA also had to approve it, and then the bank lawyer also had to approve it. So they've already approved it, and I, that's what I was concerned about is, I think the reason they tried, they did the ground lease was because we didn't want the option to be able to put pavement or gravel or any of that, and that's where it's not just passing over egress, it's just not, it's more involved than that.
Correct.
Do you think the bank's going to have heartburn with that indemnity clause that we struck out?
Yes.
Because, because, I mean, you read it and you're extremely intelligent as well, but I mean, we're indemnifying y'all for y'all's employees getting injured on that piece of property.
Correct.
You know, so they trip over our parking stops or.
And then it's our fault.
Run over or something.
Right.
Okay.
You know, I think for me, I've kind of gotten over the obstacle of the ground lease because it is a little overwhelming, right, a lot more complicated, but I understand the reasons for it. My only concern, sitting here now, is just that we have a good one, one that we're proud of, that has all the right language, and has typos corrected and all of that, that.
Agreed.
I guess we'll work on the indemnification piece, but again, it feels like we have Dale who has expertise in this area contract, and we have Patrick who has expertise in law. It seems like, I know in my past, I always took the most passionate people in the meeting and assigned them the task because they had a lot of passion about it, you know, I know Simeon has done that.
Is that why you stay so dispassionate?
You what?
Is that why you stay so dispassionate?
Yeah, I'm not passionate, I just, I just want to be proud of things that we do and want to make sure that it's clean. And I don't think we need to put the burden on our own in-house attorneys, that's just going to make our bill worse. And they don't, they're not kind of in the conversation, they're off to the side of the conversation, so. So Holly, I understand, you said the law, your lawyers would have trouble with those indemnification clauses in twenty-four being struck?
Well, it's not completely struck from what our attorney said, but it's modified. Well, well, it's not completely struck from what our attorney said, but it's modified.
The part we discussed, they would have trouble striking that?
I would want to read it again. Um, all I, all I've seen so far is where, uh, Maritara wrote it, read it out loud to us. So I would want to look at that closer, um, and of course have our attorneys review it, but I think any change to the indemnity clause would have to, to, to have a very thorough review.
Yeah, I agree.
The, the, there are a number of provisions in the current version of this agreement that our attorney is not very happy with me because I've already accepted them. Um, he, he would go much further, to be, to be very clear, than what's written there today. Um, we, we've accepted what is probably a healthy amount of liability that we wouldn't have with another business, uh, but we've chosen to because we understand it's a small town and you guys need to access your property just like we do and we'll find something that's fair for everybody, but, uh, but there are a number of items that, that we've already sort of gone against legal advice.
Are you willing to sell?
No.
Okay. No, no till you ask.
We'll give you an easement. I guess in the question of the indemnity clause we were striking, was that our suggestion? Or where did that come from?
That was...
I brought that up.
So Pam, um, that's why we had that break, she suggested that we cross out some of it and reword it just a little bit, um, so I just sent that to you, I don't know if you'll get it.
Okay.
Till you're outside the building, but, um...
Okay, so you're gonna get back with us with something?
Yeah, we'll have to review it with our attorney again.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, thank you, Holly.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. So, and do we send all these edits to Pam?
So, I'm...
I think Holly seems to think they're gonna have a problem with it, but I don't, I don't think we can, I don't think we can assume the liability of their employees on their property getting injured.
That's, that's always a risk when you're sharing something, right?
Right, I mean, if, if us or our citizens get injured on that, we're saying we're gonna do that. If we don't have disagreement with them and their citizen, their employee gets injured on that property, it's on them, so what did it change by us having that sublease?
So their employees, primarily, they have like six employees that show up on a regular basis, I think, and then they just basically drive by. They're like...
I understand, so if we don't do this today and they get hurt on that property, who's, who's at fault? They are. So if we sign this, that somehow makes us at fault for that same employee doing the same job. That's the problem with that clause.
I don't think they have any employees that would...
And maybe not.
You know, that's kind of, that's kind of a very rare...
Yeah.
What, Holly, do you have an idea on that?
It's, it's, it's a corner case, but it's still exposing the town to liability that we would not otherwise be exposed to.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you mind if I address that?
No, absolutely.
So our, the, the reason that that's stated that way is by putting a ground lease in place and the improvements that you would plan to make, there are now conditions that exist that are at your, the town's, uh, instigation, right? Because you now have access to improve the property, so if an employee is injured, to, I think Mr. Jaffe's point, is now it's a shared responsibility because there have been improvements that we didn't control, we didn't permit, we didn't build, it, that it may or may not, that our safety standards, does that make sense?
It, it does, and in fact, and, and, and if we, I'm sure there's language in here, that y'all are gonna have a say-so and if not, maybe we need to, but expectations of, of paving, if it matches yours or exceeds yours, if it's not subpar, obviously we can always be found negligent for, for things that are not to some kind of standard.
Right.
So if we're meeting some kind of level of expectation or matching what's currently there, that should negate the negligence.
So I think what we're aiming for in, in the indemnification is a two-way street.
And if they said that, I'd be good with it.
And so we'll just reconfirm that that, that it says that, that way.
Okay.
I, I think that Pam's edits may get us there if we look at all of them in total, so let me, we just need to review it.
No, I'm, I'm gonna do that. Slow the process and make sure it's right.
So I, I think that we can get there, I do, um, so, um, is there, I, I think that just with a few little, so with the, looking at liability and indemnity, we do want it to be fair and a two-way street, I think that's a good key phrase there. Um, there's, you know, some corrections, um, if, um, four B, um, if we deleted that, do you know if that would be a problem?
I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me. Can you refresh my memory?
It's a short paragraph, too.
It is understood and agreed that this lease is intended to be a net lease, except as otherwise set forth in the lease, it is the intention of the parties that the landlord shall receive the rent set forth herein, free from all charges and expenses imposed upon or by reason of the premises, uh, premises and landlord ownership thereof. So...
And Holly, I can tell you that the reason that, uh, that was brought up is, is, if you'll flip to section eleven, it says intentionally amended. The previous contract was utility and real estate taxes, that's where it put the city on the hook for the real estate taxes. Uh, with the language that's in here, it's saying that, you know, the rent set forth herein free, but then other all charges and expenses imposed, so expenses imposed could be property taxes imposed, or it could be interpreted that way. So, I, I mean, maybe we need to take the rent and put it somewhere else, but, uh, and I, I, I mean, I think y'all did an outstanding job with this, I mean, there's a few edits and I think the indemnification's gonna be the big one, but I, I think we'd make these edits and run it by everybody's attorney before we vote on it and ask for cleaning it up later.
So what do you guys think about bringing this, uh, bringing this before and we can massage it some with the attorneys involved and bring it back next week?
Yeah.
And I think we can get there.
Does that give you guys enough time?
It may not.
Okay.
It's Holly, next to you.
Yeah.
Yes, I don't know that I can get it reviewed by our...
So we would have...
I think that indemnification's gonna be the biggest one, if that could just be a short email with the American National Bank attorney or who, uh...
Well, it's gotta go through our attorney first.
I'm sorry.
Trust me, he's the higher bar.
I'm sorry.
Um, yeah, I, you know, we, to four B, I understand the request, um, and I can take that under advisement and look at it as a whole part of the, part of the document. Um, the section eleven is one of those items that I think Maritara and I agreed on against the advice of our attorney, um, is that we essentially took on all obligation for the property other than this, this nominal rent and so, uh...
Well, and I would agree with that, but driveways don't make the property value increase, which would increase your liabilities for us to have that. Now, if we were building buildings and stuff, I could see where we would share the load on the, on the property value taxes, uh, so I think that's why, that's why I push not to do that.
Yeah, and I agree, it, it's why we agreed to it.
Yeah.
Um, I, I don't disagree with you. I think four B goes slightly further and again, this is not necessary for this meeting, but I think it goes slightly further in that it, it takes not only the obligation away from the town, but if this lease is ever onto the next owner of that property and so forth, right? Then, then we've just given away additional potential rights to obligations that wouldn't necessarily just be taxes, but other potential offsets now. So it, it is a safeguard having it in here.
Correct.
Um, and so it would need to be reviewed again by our attorney.
Okay.
And maybe we can, you know, work on it a little bit. Okay, so, um, I motion that we consult, um, have Holly consult, I'll, I'll bring some of these, um, edits, amendments that we're suggesting as a counsel, I believe, and then, um, allow them to look at that and then bring it back to counsel as soon as possible. Um, we don't know when that'll be, it's Tuesday night now, so, um, but, um, I know in the past you've been very quick to, um, and I appreciate that.
Is that the full motion?
So, I, I, so basically I move that we, um, send it, send it to, um, landlord, I'll bet.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just want to say, hey, we can, I, your name and your face now, but I can hear your heart. You want it for us and, but you have to protect your best interest and so do we, so we'll, we'll figure it out. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Holly, for being here.
Thank you.
All right.
I guess I just said, when, I don't, I've done a lot of contracts and usually there is an indemnification. The only thing is you like to have it both ways. They indemnify us, we indemnify them, and that's what we ask for, but to have it totally struck, uh, not much chance of lawyers to agree to that, I don't think.
It's not totally struck, I asked to strike it, we're, we're, we're assuming all, all liabilities.
Yeah.
Like you said, it's usually a share deal. And I, and I can hear her point on that, but I think it's something that could be...
Well, lawyers don't like that for whatever reason.
Right.
Okay.
We don't have a second, so, whoops.
So...
I motion we should title, right? To a future meeting once we get all of our ducks better in a row.
Well, I think we have, what, three items on this and then some grammar, so, um, yeah, we can, um, we don't really even have to take action on it, I believe, so, okay, but that was, that was informative and productive, I think, so we'll come back and, um, see where we can land on that. All right. All right. Um, number four, discuss and take action on amended insurance rates as presented by TML Risk Insurance to meet the ground lease agreement standards for the town hall's lot. So on number four, um, TML Risk has, um, been very gracious with all the edits, um, I've sent them, um, so you under, we, um, have paid on six thirty, we paid eleven hundred dollars and fifty-four cents for our, um, risk insurance, which covers volunteers, um, and staff, um, for the town and, um, in order to get what's required in a lease agreement, we need the one million dollar liability insurance as well as a five hundred thousand dollar workman's comp, so, um, in, so in order to get the bid proposal summary on that, um, so that would be a difference, um, to the town prorated of eight hundred fifty-seven dollars and forty-one cents or two hundred and thirty-five dollars and seventy cents quarterly, um, and then the workman's comp was a prorated at a hundred and seventy-five dollars. I thought that was a bargain. So, um, I know that's much cheaper than what I pay as a business owner, so, much, much cheaper. So, um, the TML Intergovernmental Risk Pool, um, is a phenomenal, um, rate on that upfront, so, um, we have... Are there any comments by counsel before we take citizens?
If, if it's passed, I would prefer we go quarterly round.
Okay.
For casual focus.
Okay, I'm kind of weak on that. Okay.
Tara, is this, am I correct in another thing? This is triggered by the ground lease obligation, I mean, we, we may or may not do this, do something else, or...
Well, that is, that is, and then I started thinking, well, people will come up to my business when they're at the town hall visiting, like, I think we need this regardless, actually. When I started thinking about, you know, the liability that I'm incurring potentially is temporary, town hall, you know, I have people coming up to my doors, I think that it would be smart and then, you know, when we got people volunteering to work on a tractor, I'm thinking, I think, um, to have a workman's comp policy might be, when we got tractors working and we've got people pulling logs out, pulling doors, I think, uh, we've probably, we've got a lot of volunteerism, which is a great thing, but we need to cover our, um, our people and I think it's probably prudent regardless.
Yeah, 'cause I think for me, I, I would consider the comment made by a citizen earlier that if, if the ground lease is still being worked, we may want to hold off, but if we're decoupling this and saying this is a good idea, it don't matter, then, to me, that puts it in a different part of my brain.
Well, right, this whole lease agreement has got me thinking as well, that, you know, I'm hosting the temporary town hall and again, I think it would be prudent for the town to cover, you know, we have roughly, you know, is calculating, you know, ten, twelve volunteers who are doing some physical work, um, and there's potential there for problems and then not just office staff, there's other office staff, you know, paper cuts hopefully are the worst thing they get, but, but someone who's working on behalf of the town, doing heavy machinery, it might be chainsaw work, it might be mowing, it might be all kinds of outdoor activities, I think it would behoove the town to, to cover ourselves.
Now, is this, is this policy for only that location or does this wander around with us if we have meetings and activities?
Um, it, my understanding is that is for any volunteer, although, you know, any volunteer.
I mean, if we were here at the church and somebody...
We were covered, is my understanding, that we're covered, any town volunteer, um, any staff, employee, contracted labor, and it, there's language.
When they're explicitly doing town work, right?
Mm-hmm. Okay, so, um, citizens, Robin, follow, follow with, will, I guess she's not here, Chad McFarland?
Chad McFarland, one nine eight five oh FM nine eighty-six, so, I just, I kind of want to go along with what, uh, Councilman Jaffe was saying and maybe, or clarify my concern, I just want to make sure we're not paying insurance on property that we don't have a lease on yet.
Right.
Uh, the liability and covering your liability at the store, I agree we need to have, but until we actually have a lease, I want to make sure we're not paying insurance on property that we don't really have a right to, and we don't have a right to that property until we have a signed lease by all parties.
Good, good point. So the clarification is not on the leased property, it is for the town as a whole, but because the lease required it, um, it got me really thinking that, yeah, I really do think, um, as a town, it would, it would be prudent to have it regardless.
It just, it, it reads like it maybe we're insuring that property.
I understand, you're right.
That's, uh, I'm sure I'm not the only one with that concern, so...
Well, I think, yeah, it, it sounds like it's good overall coverage and protection to have and coincidentally, it would meet the requirements of the current, of the document if this is the one we roll with, so I think we're okay.
Hey, Tracy Hes.
Thanks, Chad.
Dale Bryant?
Dale Bryant, eleven one thirty-nine, County Road twenty-four sixty-four. Try to picture this and make sure that your insurance company understands what you're doing. We have a seventy-foot driveway. Half of it is designated for parking, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Still, and that's still the way it is? Okay.
Well, the driveway itself is about, excuse me, I want to clarify, you asked, so...
Less than seven.
The driveway is actually, I think, thirty-five feet and then the parking is additional thirty to thirty, thirty-eight or something.
How is this parking gonna work? Mayor, you go to work one morning, pull in, how do you, are you gonna parallel park a particular parking?
It works pretty easily, actually, I've done it many times.
I'm sorry, how?
Nose-in.
Nose-in, it works really well.
Nose-in?
Mm-hmm.
So in other words, at an angle, or...
I have always parked at an angle, I don't, I, yeah.
Okay, but it's seventy-foot area.
Thirty-five foot parking.
Thirty-five, so you're a twenty-foot, so you're leaving fifteen feet...
No, sir.
Thirty-five, an anglered parkway.
No, sir.
For car, a legal parking space at an angle is twenty feet.
We have, again, we have thirty foot of parking and then at least thirty, thirty to thirty-two.
That's where the improvement's coming.
So the driveway itself is thirty-five foot.
Okay.
The, the leased area includes the, the...
I get it.
Yes, so the actual parking is, it affects a very long truck.
How much, how much area does Longhorn need to make sure that they can get in and out of their property while you're conducting this? My, my point is, you're, you probably are going to have to pull into their driveway parallel park.
No, sir, there's plenty of room, otherwise...
When we were there the other day looking at it, um, the, the gravel area is the driveway, the dirt area by the fence is the parking area.
That's what you're gonna improve.
That, there's a potential to improve it if the lease goes through there.
All, all I'm saying is initially then, cars are gonna have to back out onto the county road to get out.
No, sir.
No, no.
I would have ordered them to bring it back there.
They're gonna turn around in the thirty-five feet?
So, so...
They're turning around in the thirty-five feet?
So Dale, we can talk to you about this after an explain.
No, all I'm saying is...
We were talking about insurance.
Be careful what you're saying, make sure your insurance company knows, you're gonna pull in...
Yeah, but, but the insurance... Yeah, but, but the insurance...
Thirty-five feet of gravel, cleechy. Now, you're going to turn around in thirty-five feet?
No, no, sir, I need to explain.
To get out, or you're going to back it?
Okay.
So I'm hearing... I, I backed onto the gravel and then pulled down to the county road.
There's plenty of room, I promise you. And the insurance is, um, covers the entire town, it's, it's, it's apart from, yeah. So this was number four insurance, so, yes, sir.
Right, so I'm, I'm hearing Dale say that make sure that our insurance policy considers the actual use and arrangement.
Especially if you were going to have to back out onto a county road to get out.
And they may or may not have concerns, so.
Yeah.
Okay, but that's my concern, but also for Longhorn, if you only have thirty-five feet, how much of that, what do you, I think there needs to be some provision in the lease to stipulate how much of that driveway is...
Okay, have you driven over there, Dale?
Yes.
Okay, all right, okay. Shelley Smith? All right, Patrick Smith?
If you look at section twelve of the ground lease agreement for insurance, it specifies that the town agrees to provide one million dollars in commercial general liability insurance, a million dollars in commercial automobile, uh, workers' compensation in the amount of five hundred thousand, and then an umbrella or excess liability policy of another million. And going through the documents provided with the agenda, I see a five hundred thousand dollar general liability policy quote, auto liability of a million, nothing about workers' compensation, nothing about excess or umbrella liability coverage. So, unless something's been added after the amended agenda was posted, I guess, yesterday or Sunday, the, the insurance is not lined up in accordance with, uh, the contractual obligations of the town. Going to the issue of the indemnity agreement.
Okay, we're, we're on insurance right now, so...
Yes, ma'am, but, right, we're on insurance.
So, so the workman's comp, there's a separate page for that, it's a whole other page?
It's not in, is it in the agenda? Is it in the back there?
Uh, it should be, um, that should be in there.
Okay, well, if you got it, that's great. I didn't, I didn't see anything in the agenda that reflected that. And I certainly didn't see a million dollar umbrella excess liability policy. On the issue of liability and indemnity, indemnity is an obligation under Texas substantive law that a party can contractually agree to. It is very unusual, it's unfavored by the courts. When it is indemnification, where one party says, "I will stand up in court and take the judgment and pay the judgment that results in an accident or injury, not from my fault, not from my negligence, but from the landlord's negligence." That is a huge risk undertaking. And the reason it ties in with insurance is the town can get contractual liability to cover that risk. But I think you need to get a quote on that before you decide what to do on the issue.
Thank you, Patrick.
All right.
So, since the point was made, Tara, because, I mean, at least two of us sitting side by side don't have anything but the one page to Patrick's point, what is the line item for workers' comp?
So the, so the prorate, um, and so, do you not have this here?
Well, I have the email discussion that you had with her, where she says the prorated from eleven sixteen twenty-two to five twenty-eight twenty-three would be a hundred and seventy-five.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
For workers' comp.
So...
Yeah, I think any of us got the actual quote.
Yeah, we didn't get the quote.
Okay.
And I don't have anything, even in the email, that talks about umbrella.
Okay, so the, um, so here is, it's originally a three hundred and thirty-one dollars prorate would be a hundred and seventy-five dollars.
So, worker's comp is three thirty-one?
And then prorate from, um, eleven six to five twenty-eight twenty-three would be one seventy-five.
So is that number in the page we did get somewhere? Is it built into this? The individual items are general liability areas, emissions, auto and auto medical.
So, no, it's a separate, it's a separate thing, thank you.
But what about the umbrella, is what?
The umbrella, now you see here sudden events involving, so it talks about, um, you know, we, I did send her a copy of the lease agreement, so, um...
Yeah, but to that point, the general liability need to be one million dollars to meet the lease agreement?
So, the, I know it says one million aggregate, um...
So five hundred each occurrence, does that meet the lease agreement if we move forward on that lease agreement?
Do you know, Holly, if a five hundred thousand dollar each occurrence, one million aggregate would meet that requirement?
Because if it's one person getting injured, they're going to get paid. It says single limit of one million dollars.
It's originally I'd asked the TML for two million, and then I lowered it to one million, so...
Umbrella four.
Yeah, I don't think that meets the, the umbrella.
I can go, I can go back to Angela, um, with TML, um, and discuss that with her. She's pretty readily available.
Yeah, I think TML is going to have to increase that, I mean. Because I'm sure Longhorn's attorneys are going to want a copy of that.
Well, I think if, if the goal, as Tara said, is just to protect ourselves from something, this probably does that. But if we want to come back and use the same for the ground lease, written more or less the way it is, it's not going to work, we're going to go through this again.
So, they, um, so probably can have something, um, from her pretty readily. She's been really good and, you know, about responding in a timely manner, so.
So.
Okay. Yep. All right, we can bring this back?
How many items will we have to on the next move?
I think this brings it to six. Uh, number five, discuss and take action on the quotes, quotes for handicap ramp required by federal guidelines for the town hall sites. So, we have a, um, you know, I've been trying to get, um, builders to, are so swamped right now, it's been hard to even get any quote. This is a fellow, John Stewart, who, um, is also working with a framer. And, um, he submitted this, um, sketch and with his, um, building cost. And then he included three hundred and ninety-six dollars and twenty-seven cents for labor. He's trying to be, he's very generous, I thought. He's trying to be very good to our town, I think. Um, so, we did talk about, for commercial, it needs to be forty-eight inches wide, um, have a one-twelve pitch, so that's one inch incline for every twelve inches, um, and a five by five foot landing, anytime there's a turn. The top of the rail needs to be between thirty-four and thirty-eight inches to meet ADA requirements. So, with all of that, I think a fifteen hundred dollar quote is phenomenal. I think that's a very, very reasonable quote. Um, any other discussion on that?
Yeah, um, so one and twelve is ADA, that's correct. What's the length of that ramp?
Twenty-seven feet.
Twenty-seven feet.
I think that's where the problem is. I would have to, I wish Robin was here, she'd probably actually know. There's only a certain distance that you can run before you have to have a flat landing again.
He, he researched that, and he's...
I don't think it's twenty-seven feet, I think it's about fifteen.
Well, I know, he, he talked about the gravel that would need to be underneath it, so...
I think it has to do with if the wheelchair runs away.
If the ramp is twenty-seven feet long, I think there's a certain breaking point, I think it's fifteen feet. You have to have a flat land, and then start...
Oh, every fifteen?
And, and it's more runaway, it's kind of, kind of, but it's really, it's going uphill, right? So, your exhaustion point, you stop, and you're not, you're not...
So instead of keeping it inclined, and he would maybe stop and have a, a flat surface and then continue?
Yeah, because that's the only thing, I mean, the, the, the price is obviously phenomenal with, with labor. Uh, but, uh, I mean, if we build something that's not ADA, because we're not experts.
Right.
Uh, boy, we've assumed some liability and a, and a great discount.
Yeah, that turns out to be a discount.
Libor...
So, you, um, so it's easily looked up?
We could review that, but he, he just needs to be on the same page with us on that deal.
Okay, so you're, you think that it might be every fifteen feet?
Yeah.
Um, so...
I mean, even the treads have, are not the treads, but the pickets have a certain distance in between the pickets that they can be. I mean, there's, there's a lot more to ADA than just a one and twelve pitch.
Well, actually, Terry, I was out there when he was looking, and I, I made sure he understood, had to beat ADA requirements, and he appeared to me that he knew what he was, what they were. But I said, you know, especially being a civil building, not a business, we have to meet ADA. And his only question was, well, at the end of the ramp, is it going to be gravel or what? And I said, I presume gravel. But all the rest, you know, I mean, we're not going to have a concrete to the road. But it has, he did say it has to be somewhere that a wheelchair can go from the end of this ramp out to the parking area, which he was asking about. And so I showed him where the parking area would be, presuming we can get this done with, uh, Holly. And that, he said, well, okay, then that part has to be set for a, a wheelchair, but that's outside of his quote. But his quote, and he seemed to know what ADA was, uh, the requirement, so I presume, I hope he did.
So if we had...
There's a lot more to it than this, I can promise you, you have to have textured surfaces.
Yeah.
I mean, just, there, there's a lot more to it than a handwritten quote. And, and I don't mind helping him walk through that, but I'm not the expert on that either, so...
So to, i- if we added a, um, a landing halfway in between there, it might add some expense to it. But, um, you know, he was talking about doing, um, I guess, treat, treated lumber, that, and he might have to put the, what the sanding sort of coat on there.
Maybe. And Robin might be able to help us with that, she seems to know the building coats pretty good, but, I mean, might just be...
Yeah, it looks like the, the ADA law says that a maximum ramp rise of thirty inches, after thirty inches of rise, a rest platform must be provided. So if you're going twenty-seven feet, you're rising twenty-seven inches.
So, we're still in, we're still good. All right, so we're fine.
That seems to be okay for...
And I know he did research it early, because he said unfamiliar with it, but, so, yeah, so as long as it's only twenty-seven feet, not thirty feet, we should be fine, is that correct?
Now, we're, we're not looking at a top-down here, he did a nice drawing, but is it, is it going to get them out to the parking lot or wherever?
It comes, um, to Tom, it's not, you have to put some gravel, you have to put a little bit of, um, gravel or something for a good, what, six feet maybe?
Uh, more than that, I believe. But that was his question for us, is what is it going to be from the end of this twenty-seven feet out to the parking area? And I said, do I presume it'd be gravel? It needs, well, it has to be a wheelchair, something that a wheelchair can roll on, which means it can't be rough gravel, it's going to be pretty...
It would have to be compacted, compacted gravel.
So, it, it could either be that crushed...
Or concrete.
Or something like that, a wheelchair.
The crushed granite, um, is pretty easily, um, gone over with a wheelchair, so if you put... Yeah, compacted.
So, so that was, his point was to keep the cost for him down, is that we would take care of the rest of it from the twenty-seven feet out to the parking. So I said, yeah, I would presume that, but on the other hand, you know, that, I hadn't really thought about it until he raised it.
Are these posts set in the ground, or are they on concrete blocks?
That was one of my questions, doesn't show any concrete.
Yeah, what's the attachment to the building?
Pads and bricks.
There's pads.
He said the bricks on the corner, um, on the one corner, that the rest of it would be, um, I believe...
Looks like it's sitting on top of the ground.
He did say, he said he passed on his, um, work order, his, it says eight bricks and eight pads. So it looks like they'll be going into bricks and pads.
Yeah, I see for eight pads, that, that's like the porch area, not very near.
Yeah. Well, I, I did tell him that if he got to having to bury, I have an auger that we could use to, uh, and then concrete in, because actually, while I was doing the flagpole, I thought he was out there.
Okay, so...
Yeah, just, yeah, let's, let's hear from the...
Okay, Chad McFarland?
Chad McFarland, one nine eight five oh FM nine eighty-six. Um, I just hope we don't start any construction until we get the ground lease agreement done, because the building's been moved once. Let's try not to put anything on until we, I think we've all figured out that when it comes to property deals, make sure all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed before we start doing anything else, so. Need the ramp, sounds like a great quote, and, but let's, don't do anything until that ground lease agreement is figured out.
Thank you, Chad. Tracy Hibs?
Tracy Hibs, nine four four one County Road twenty-four thirty-two. Um, so we did specify treated wood on here, um, because the cost per unit would be much higher. Um, the other thing we need to take in consideration is a sealant on the wood to prevent erosion. So that cost is ineffective in this bit also. Um, and I'm gonna just say the same thing that Chad said. Until we have a ground lease agreement locked in tight, we don't need to make any additions to the building until that's figured out. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Dale Bryant?
Dale Bryant, eleven one thirty-nine County Road twenty-four sixty-four. Uh, Councilman Fowler, correct, is regarding the ADA, there's a lot more to that than you need. However, what you might want to do with your agreement is put in there that the contractor will meet all ADA, uh, requirements, including an inspection and make any recommended changes. There are, um, ADA inspectors, I can give you the names some, that you can call, a couple hundred bucks, they'll look at the drawings, make sure it looks like, on a drawing, looks like it's ADA. Then they come back out after it's built and inspect it and write up a, a report, and turn that into the state. Because we're a, um, this is a public building, not a private building. I think we might be, um, advised to, uh, do everything, um, legally and properly. But there is an agency with the state, uh, and that report has to go to the state. And if the state finds out you built a building and didn't have that inspection, they will send an inspector out and do it for you.
So Dale, please to email me, uh, your list, your short list of, thank you.
Just also make, just think about this, all of the problems having with the insurance and turning around and everything. Put the park, you're going to spend money building a parking lot on a right-of-way, somebody's driveway. Put the parking lot on our property. It's going to be closer to the handicap ramp, you're going to be able to get them out of there, instead of trying to figure out, you know, how are you going to get somebody in a wheelchair across a cleechy drive? So just put the parking on our property, eliminate most of that injury, and then, and make the bank, the, the landlord, lenders happy by not dealing with the parking issue. You're spending the money anyway. Thank you.
Shelley Smith? Patrick Smith? All right. Okay, so regardless where the parking is, we have to have an agreement to be able to use their driveway. Um, and so, um, just so that's understood. So on the handicap, um, ramp, um, so we did discuss treated lumber, of course. Um, I do like the idea of having an ADA inspection, if it doesn't cost us an arm and a leg. Um, we will have a post, um, building inspector anyway. Um, Councilmember Anderson has already agreed to pay for that one, he paid for the other one. And so we're appreciative of that. Um, as far as the sealant goes, um, that's, I, I think would be something that a volunteer could, could handle. Um, so, any other discussions on this, did, on this quote?
Well, I did ask if it was treated, and he said treated wood, and he said yes.
Yes, he told me that as well.
Yeah, I don't think we're necessarily ready to vote on this. And I would actually like to see those items that he will do an AD compliant, and that, you know, all the specifications that we're looking for in an actual document, in addition to the, the rendering he gave us. But I like the rendering, but the, the documentation is, is something that I think is necessary.
Okay. Any other thoughts on that?
Just something else to consider even when we do move forward, that, uh, obviously he didn't feel, be your tax, because we're tax exempt, but we'll have to make that purchase. I don't think that he'll be able to sign off on that, will he, at Home Depot? We don't have anything, we'd have to send him with a, a certificate of tax.
I, I can do that, I have done that, actually.
And I just, I would also point out that when we had the inspection done on the prior location, the inspector did check the ramp to see that it was ADA approved. Now, what his qualifications are, I don't know, it may be, we do need somebody who is more specific. But he, he did say it was ADA qualified, or approved for the prior building, which would make it seem the inspector we used before, if he comes back and says one, well, he should know that. But I, I do see the point of getting somebody that's an expert in that area to look at it, at least review it.
Okay, so, that's... Okay, so specification list and, um, a potential, um, inspector for that, any other comments? So if I-
Are we gonna write some kinda contract with him that doesn't look like he's gonna require a contract with us?
He, he doesn't require that, and we can do kind of a simple contract if you prefer, um-
Based on the specifications?
Based on the specifications of an ADA, I think might be good.
I mean, if, if he fills in specs on it, I mean, it only costs us three hundred ninety-six dollars in labor, but we still have to fix it.
Right.
Right. I think that might be prudent. Okay, so we'll have to see this one again.
And discussion, no action?
Any discussion, no action. Okay. Okay, number six, discuss and take action on septic installation costs for the new townhouse site. The sixty-four hundred dollar bid, I did talk with Carl Crowe, CBD, and I said, hey, I know this is, this proposal is good for thirty days, so you need to give us a little more time, he said, yes, so thank you to Carl. Um, so, but I am concerned that we, you know, with this proposal, it does include the spray head and existing components from the one that we installed in December on the campground, um, plot. So, I don't, we don't wanna wait too long, because I don't know how long that warranty will be good for. We did install it last December, so that is a concern. Um, so, um, we do have, thankfully, um, we do have Mr. Brett Patterson, who is here tonight. Um, and he did generously offer to donate two thousand dollars to, um, go for, um, that sixty-four hundred dollar quote. Um, so that reduces it, and then, um, I will recuse myself, I also donated two thousand dollars, um, to that. So I will recuse myself from the rest of this discussion and allow Mayor Pro Ten to take over the discussion on this one.
Well, before you, uh, is that four, is that four thousand already included in the reported holdings from the financial report, the thirty-five thousand or whatever?
No, it's not. No, that's, it's, that's a pledged amount.
Okay.
So Brett Patterson has given himself before to the causes of the town and then, um, myself as well, so, so that is pledged. Mm-hmm, and toward that cause. So that makes the cost to the town only twenty-four hundred dollars. And Councilmember Anderson, I'm gonna let you take over.
Okay, I guess first the council questions. Are we gonna go with the, uh, citizens' comments first, or are the, the council first?
We, we usually have us a brief discussion and then, that's what I, okay, so it's open to the council.
Terry, I know you recused yourself, but do you have that email available for the, uh, the septic engineer?
I got it.
I don't think I've ever-
I have it.
Do you have it printed?
Yeah.
I'd like to see it.
Okay. To establish what?
I, I, I've never seen where we're putting the, you know, they've come to question before where we're putting our heads, our septic heads.
Did, he was the same person who did the evaluation for the prior location?
So this, this is directly, it's northwest, but directly to the left of our building.
No, it's in back.
It's behind it.
If you're from the parking area, it would be behind it.
Is it, this is County Road three twenty-three?
I'm sorry?
That's County Road three twenty-three, that's our building?
Yeah.
What, aerobic? I understand, but I'm saying where the aerobic heads are. Is that not the aerobic heads?
Actually, Terry, he said he could put it on the end of the building or right behind-
I'm not, I'm not concerned about the tanks, I'm concerned about the heads. That's, that's what the citizens have brought up, where the heads are gonna be.
Okay, the heads, he gave me the distance, and I can't remember his-
It's twenty-five feet off the property line, that's set by the-
Yeah, and back, and so it would have to be between the two trees. If you look straight back from the back of the building, there's two trees, and he said it would have to be back in that area, straight out, and it'd be one.
So it's proposing one head?
Yes.
But on this drawing, it's directly northwest of the building, which is the flow path of the water?
Well, it is, but on the other hand, the person I talked to said, the septic, the inspector said, it could be anywhere in that area, but it'd have to be between the trees.
So we could move it directly past the building up on the hill and get it away from the flow path of the water?
Um-
Does that have to be replayed?
That's, that's gonna be real close to the twenty-five feet.
So he said it is up on, for clarity, it's on the top of the, of the hill, not down, just for clarity.
The, the tank is on the top.
But the, the flow head as well?
No, the flow head's down, it's in back, and it's not as low as back to the left, but it is on the lower area, yes. Cause it has to flow downhill.
The, the questions that the citizens have raised is they don't want it flowing, they want it saturated, soled, as opposed to flowing down the ditches. I understand it's supposed to be potable, but I don't think anybody in this room will drink from it. Right? So is there a way to put it where it wouldn't be in a flow path during, during the rain? Cause they don't have rain sensors on them, right? We get a one-inch rain and we start having runoff, they're not like your irrigation sprinklers at home, they're not gonna turn off, they're gonna run.
Well, I guess with the pad that we have, the answer is no. I don't see it.
Well, I, I don't mind calling Kevin up if he don't wanna, if he, if he doesn't mind speaking, cause he has more knowledge of that land, but, but I, I think there's room where that pond was or behind it, I mean, this is, should be the scale.
But if, if you go behind the pond, or where the pond was, and you spray towards Longhorn, um, then that's going into part of the runoff that you're trying to avoid as well.
I, yeah, and I don't know, that, I thought all that was brought up.
Uh, it, it comes from the, the upper corner northwest, down that fence line, then back down around and, and then, yeah, tend to-
This area right here, not the highest part of that property, northeast corner?
I think it is, but it's, uh, where the pond was you're talking about?
So the, the runoff comes in from up here, and then does this, and then that, right?
See, that looks like an obstacle runoff.
No, this, this is, this is the, the, the plateau that we're on is out there.
Okay, that's runoff everywhere. Okay. That's all I wanna discuss.
Did I represent that correctly? Yes.
Okay, any other questions? Yes, then, uh, the citizens first, Robin Followwell? I'm sorry, Chad, sorry, Kevin Sekovich? Chad McFarland?
Chad McFarland, one nine eight five oh FM nine eighty-six. Uh, my comments on the last topic, you can basically replay them for this one. Until the land agreement's done and you, all the property details are taken care of, we don't need to be, that septic's been installed once, you know, let's, let's not make mistakes again.
Okay, Tracy Hibbs?
Tracy Hibbs, nine four four one, County Road twenty-four thirty-two. Um, I'm not exactly sure, I think I know where the septic's gonna go. Um, the question that I have, or comment that I have, is there's, the building is starting to sink in some areas. So is there any, are we gonna fix that?
Where's it sinking?
So it's bowed on the left, if you're looking at the building on the right-hand side.
I'll take a look.
I'm just worried that, you know, if we've got an aerobic system, and it creates a little runoff or the pad that's already there in any shape or form, then we're gonna have more erosion underneath the building itself.
Okay, Dale Bryant? Uh, Shelley Smith?
Shelley Smith, one eight seven three oh FM fifteen sixty-five. Has anybody done a septic and parking feasibility study on the property?
I don't know. Well, the septic engineer, yes.
But not, not with parking?
It's a technical study that he did, the fe- the technical part of the septic system.
Yeah, okay, so, but that was only concerning the septic, it didn't include the feasibility of doing the septic and parking?
Well, the parking's on the opposite side, opposite direction.
Parking is in, on Longhorn's property. So how many parking spaces are we anticipating on the Longhorn easement area?
I don't know, that's not the issue we're talking about here.
It, well, it kinda is. What, uh, what I'm getting at is, let's be responsible and look and see, can that same amount of parking fit along with the septic on the property that belongs to the town?
Well, the septic was staged based on the occupancy of the building, and the answer is yes, the septic can handle that, it's solely separate from the parking issue.
Okay.
She's saying if we move the parking to where the septic's going, parked around the back of the building.
Or, or slide the building over. You know, I know it would cost another thousand dollars, two thousand dollars, but, but the potential of sliding the building over and creating the parking on our own property, where we have zero headaches then of having to deal with the what-ifs of, you know, say Longhorn goes out of business, I don't know. But I'm just saying, I think it would be really responsible to go in and just look at it. I mean, let's, let's get out there and just walk it off and see. Okay, we'd have to take down a couple of trees, but, um, anyway, I, I really, I think it would be a very, very sound investment.
If you decide to walk it right now, I do highly suggest waiters.
Right, yeah, yeah, well, I mean, and, and we probably would have to bring in a ton of dirt or whatever, level, or, and then of course you'd have to have the, the-
More studies.
A way to get in there, you know, a pipe and the driveway and all that kinda stuff. I know that there would be more involved in it, but then it's, it's done, and we don't have to worry about it, you know, every five years or whatever. So, anyhow, there you go.
You know, I, I agree with the idea that we need to, we could park on our own land, but you know, if you look at the dimensions of this thing, it's only a hundred and sixty feet wide on the roadside, three hundred and eleven deep, I mean, you're not gonna get very many cars. The, the ground we're talking to Longhorn about is half the acreage of our entire property.
Well, but the building isn't, the building and the septic isn't taking up half the acreage. And how much space, if we move the building back twenty feet, I don't know, I haven't really looked at that.
Well, and-
You get what I'm saying, and I would love to-
Your, your point's well made, it's just the complexity of getting cars funneled in and out, cause now you have to have bigger driveways to get around each other if somebody leaves early, I mean, we can't.
Yeah, it, it, we'd have to really sit down and look at it. I'm a very creative person, if you wanted me to look at it, I would give you my two cents, so.
Do you have a copy of this?
Actually, you know what, if I had the, the, the scale of the building and what the septic requirements are, I would love to look at it and, and tell you what I can do.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Patrick Smith? Okay.
I wanted, I wanted to add one other thing, I just had a thought, and maybe we can talk to, uh, is it Carl Crowe?
Yeah, Carl.
Uh, the, the other op, so there's, there's other options, uh, conventional systems, they're hard to get past in, in, nowadays. But besides bringing your, your sprayers to the top, you can still have an aerobic system, but it doesn't have sprayers, it's considered low dosage. So it pressurizes the lateral lines under the ground, as opposed to spraying the potable sewage on top of the ground and getting in this runoff that, that I quite frankly have a problem with too, just after the citizens brought that up. So I wonder what Carl would say about, cause the pump and all that's the same. Now we're literally talking about a little bit of lateral line that's pressurized, and that allows it to leach into the ground and let the ground, um, do what it does as opposed to being on top, so that's an option. And then we could take it straight up the hill, we can take it down the fence line, it, it still probably has some regulations on where you could put it, but it would get it out of the middle of that flow path.
Were you saying you were gonna give him a call and talk about-
I, I'll be glad to.
I, I, I believe I already did talk to him about that.
About low, low dose? And what'd he say?
Well-
You can speak on that, we're not talking about your donation.
So, um, he, he, he wanted input from the engineer on that, um, especially with the water flow, and he didn't think there was adequate space necessarily.
I don't mind calling him and seeing what he needs, I mean, we've already built a pretty big agenda for the next meeting anyways.
Sadly.
I mean, we're, we're brick mason.
Nobody has Thanksgiving plans, right?
I mean, if, if y'all wanna consider that, to see what our option is, I, I think it's worthwhile.
Well, again, I think the, the nice thing about that is it at least gives the illusion
Yes, exactly.
of you're not spraying treated water where you are, you're just doing it inches below the surface. So if the ground is flooded, it's still gonna come to the top, but it, it's like a pretend, some change-
We are talking about a building that's gonna have maybe two people in it most of the month.
Yeah, we're gonna flush the toilet twice a month, so I don't think it's gonna be a-
I don't think it's gonna be that huge of an issue.
I, I guess I'd ask Terry, are you saying you'd volunteer to check on that?
I, I'll call Carl Crowe.
Check the option?
And I, yeah, I can call Clear Stream Direct where he gets his stuff and see what, if there's any upgrades, I mean, yeah, we, I can work that out.
Okay, then if we, if we did that, and, uh, can you do it by then too?
Yeah, I'll just, a phone call.
So we could-
Well, actually, you won't need it before then?
Yeah.
Uh, put it on the agenda, we'll discuss it regardless.
Yeah, well, okay.
I'll provide it as soon as I can, but-
Yeah, we'll need it.
Yeah, well, we can just wait on this then.
Okay, so we're tabling it till next meeting?
I mean-
There's no action?
I don't think I have this on there.
So Tom, there's no action on this?
Yes.
Except that Terry's gonna go talk to Carl about another option?
That's the op, that's the action, and hopefully we can discuss it Tuesday.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, number seven, discuss and take action on a second year Christmas lights contest for Saturday, December seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, volunteers needed. Um, I think we have about five people who are interested in helping with that, we had quite a nice crew last year, so any discussion?
Um, are we going to have a electric anytime soon?
We got it last Monday.
Last Monday, good. Okay, so we could have a sound system and hot cocoa again, right?
We could.
We could make that an, an official town function, so that resets the six-month clock, right?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's only gonna be like a couple hours, so no bathroom needed, unless we do a porta potty, maybe?
Don't go before they come.
Okay, any other discussion on that? Okay, uh, Robin Followwell, she's not here, Tracy Hibbs, mom in the back, she passes, okay? Alright, so as last year, we had no town funds going toward that, it was primarily donations and volunteers. Um, I'm assuming that that's, um, the way it will happen this year as well. It was kind of a positive thing, it was a lot of fun. Um, we had, we had some really good, um, input from citizens and participation, so it was, it was really kind of a fun thing, so.
I guess we can include the E P J now?
Well, we did last year as well.
Um, you, you just said no town funds would go towards it, and you know, from last year's discussion, you know, I'm scourge and I'm for that. Um, however, I do wanna make the stipulation that I understand that the town will be paying for the electricity that is used to do this. So, just, I'm, I'm trying to keep transparent, folks. So that's, um, you know, that, that would be the only stipulation, but otherwise I'm for this.
I think last time you just solicited the crowd, you won't put it out on the place.
So, um, we could, so you tell me what you wanna do.
Last time you asked, solicit the crowd, I think you got-
So, yeah, so is anyone in the crowd who would like to participate with us, who hasn't already signed up, or who, maybe who has? That's in the morning, no, this is me in the evening, but good point.
To make a day of partying.
So I, anyone in from the crowd that might be interested, so I think last year we did it around night, like started maybe an hour before nightfall, and it's rapidly changing, so I think that might be five or five-thirty, something like that.
Volunteer for what?
Okay, awesome. Okay, so- Okay, awesome, okay, so I think, uh, Amy helped last year, so, um, Sherry Vincent, um, also has said she'd help, um, Barbara Mueller, Eddie Anderson, um.
And the terrible crisis for us in December, yeah, so there's no conflict.
Oh, okay, I know there's lots of things happening in December, so, but, um, thank you. All right, so any other citizens that wanna pipe in on that, I'm asking? Okay, Ms. Bowles, okay, thank you. It was a lot of fun, making reads and, you know. And Robin Bowles.
Uh, we can put a blurb in the, uh, post
Okay.
To try to recruit others.
Okay. The post tries to go out in the first week of the month, so it'd be right in time, but we'll try and
It advertises it, then I don't know that they advertise for volunteer guys.
Volunteers, I could maybe put a blip out in the, uh, Facebook and neighbors.
Sounds like you got four or five now.
Yeah, we've got Amy, Robin Bowles, Barbara Mueller, Eddie Anderson, Sherry Vincent, myself. Um, I'm probably forgetting someone, I think there's Debbie Emmer did say, mhm, so that's at least seven, I think that's a good number. All right, so all those in favor of, um, or actually, is there a motion? Got a motion for this?
Well, I make a motion, have a Christmas lights contest.
And is there a second?
I'll second it to get over my Scrooge.
The goodwill, okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Anderson, seconded by Councilmember Vincent, um, to go and have the second year, um, Christmas lights contest for Saturday, December seventeenth. Um, and I think we've talked about having it at the town hall, the, the site.
Are we taking donations and prizes, what's, uh?
Last year, that's the way it happened, we solicited neighborhood businesses and
So that help media will handle that, we're just approving the thing.
You're just approving that the town will endorse it? Yes, sir, okay, all those in favor, and that passes unanimously. Number eight, discuss and take action on a poetry community-wide cleanup day for Saturday, December tenth, seven AM to seven PM, volunteers needed for three-hour increments. Now, in a perfect world, that's what happens last month, um, Titan approved, um, just in the last, what, two, three weeks, that they would be willing to donate a, um, thirty, I think it's a thirty-yard dumpster for that cause. Um, so, and I did hear back from, I asked Wesley Killian to check with the Camp Town Cemetery Board to see if they would allow us, not knowing if the lease agreement would be in, in effect at that time, so we have an option of either, and he did say that they approved that use, but it's kind of nice because it's spread out, and, um, the last time we did this, last spring, I believe, it was very, um, well-received, we had, we filled up that dumpster and then another dumpster, so I know at least have, will at least have the Titan thirty-yard, and I had about three citizens request it again, um, and so I know that it, it is something that our citizen, you know, I think they would like, now, as far as me
Just Titans, supply?
Just Titan, and I have not, um, since Secretary Teresa has had some medical issues, um, she hasn't been able to, um, call those others, um, so, but, you know.
Can we move one of Black Jack's dumpsters down there and use it?
The, the one that's on, uh, nine eighty-six?
Oh, my goodness. They, they did move that, you know, um, all right, um, so I can check with, um, the card and A W T, and I think the last time it was Reed, Reed helped, but then A W T, I think, helped Titan and C R.
C R S and A W T went together.
Went together to help.
Yeah, Reed did have his own.
Yes, Reed had his own, and then Titan, um, had their own, and then A W T and C R S helped.
I'm, I'm hoping somebody other than Titan will step up, because we apparently have a lot of junk in this town.
Well, in order to keep poetry beautiful, we need, you know, to keep the mattresses off the
Off the streets?
Off the streets, and the, uh, now, they don't take, um, they do not take broken-down refrigerators or freezers, but apparently there's a place on two seventy-six that, that will take those, and I discovered that last time. Um, so, but everything else, there's quite a list of things that they accepted, so I was pleasantly surprised.
Now, are we doing I D checks again for making sure that we're in the area? And somebody doesn't have like
Loose I D checks, loose, so that they're not from a point, but, you know, so, anyway, um. All right, so Tracy Hoods, did you wanna speak to this?
Tracy Hoods, County Road, twenty-four thirty-two, nine four four one. Um, I don't even know what this is. I mean, I, I wasn't here last year, so, so is this where we pick up trash on the roads, is this where we
Where you bring it from, you know, if you have stuff in your barns?
Okay.
Yeah, um, it's a, it's a community cleanup day.
Okay, so we encourage, and to add to that, we encourage citizens to, um, make, make it a family day or something, and, or, you know, at least a couple hours, pick up trash along the sides of the roads in front of their homes.
Okay.
Or, you know, clean up, um, the streets around them.
Is there a volunteer sign-up sheet for it anywhere?
Um, we can make one, we just need to get it passed before we can do that.
Do we, is there any way to dispose of like paints and aerosol?
You have, the paints can be taken, but they have to be solid, you have to go to the hardware store and buy little packets of powders you pour in, and then the paint becomes solid.
Gotcha.
It can't be liquid.
Yeah, what if you have latex, you leave the top off of it and let it evaporate and solidify?
Okay, cool, I didn't know we did that, thanks, yeah.
So, um, yeah, before we receive last time, so, all right, so that's the last of our, um, citizen comments, anything else? Any volunteers, that's what we need, okay, awesome, thank you Brett, so, um, yeah, I was, I think last time we did three-hour increments, and that's just basically to make sure that we don't have the refrigerators landing in the dumpster, and then also, you know, we don't want someone from, like I said, way outside of our area, we're being, you know, so Tracy, did you want?
Are the volunteers at the site, or?
At the site, and so depending on, now it's a chance, Holly did go ahead and say that if we had the lease agreement, that we could put it on the town hall site, um, there's plenty of room to do it there as well, but, um, that is yet to be seen, so we, if it's seven AM to seven PM, three-hour increments for, um, assistance, so, um, that's twelve hours, so we need at least four people to sign up for that, so if Ryan said he would, and the Brett said he would, so we just need a couple more, and Tracy said she would, excellent, um, then we just need one more.
We'll get them.
Okay, so, all right, so we have a motion for this?
I move we go with our second cleanup day, uh, Sunday, Saturday, December tenth.
Okay, we have a motion, um, to have our second cleanup day for Saturday, December tenth, seven AM to seven PM. A motion made by Councilmember Vincent, seconded by Anderson, all those in favor, and that passes unanimously. So, come talk to me afterward, all right, so, um, number nine, discuss and take action on purchasing an online messaging board slash forum service for the town. Um, Councilmember, um, White did a lot of the labor on this, so I'm gonna ask him to share, please.
Absolutely, because we have been very limited on what we could talk about, you know, certain citizens have reached out to us individually and not been able to, uh, you know, let us reply, all these discussions that have been limited because of O M A, um, compliances that we have to do, which is just if a quorum of us, which is three or more discussing something, it has to be in public. The only exception that there can ever be to that is we can have an online messaging board, that's one click away from the website homepage, and that provides a great forum for us to discuss this ahead of time, hopefully get some, uh, get some stuff discussed and out there for two reasons, one, so these meetings go a little faster, and two, so citizens can actually see what we're talking about. You know, we have these long email chains, but, you know, y'all never see them. So this would give opportunity for the council to talk, to my understanding, and I concede on other people's, not just anybody can post on here, it's only councilmen, so there is that limitation. Even other city employees besides the secretary, um, shouldn't post on there under normal circumstances. Now, we don't have any employees, so it doesn't really matter, but those are some of the limitations, if anybody, I know there's a few people that like to look at the subchapters and the legal, so the subchapter that does this is Local Government Code five-five-one dot zero-zero-six, in case anybody wants to look that up. And it's pretty simple, we have to make sure the communication's written, if it's deleted, then we have to make sure we retain it on record, if it's been posted for over thirty days, and there are a lot of options out there, I sent out a little information packet about it, it's pretty straightforward, we probably just wanna have the, the software bought, and it's stored on cloud instead of having a physical server, it's just a lot less complicated. And, uh, pretty much, it's the service I was looking at, it's just fifteen dollars a month, so it's a pretty straightforward way for us to give out information to the citizens and discuss it ahead of time, and hopefully just communicate a lot better in the future.
Hopefully shorten the meetings. Yeah, I mean, I think, I think it has huge potential, and did you say it's authorized through the House bill? Right, so Texas specifically authorized this as a form of an open meeting, I believe it was the House bill, I don't have the number memorized, but to me, this would be huge for me personally, in my involvement in council, because we get here, and even if we have everything in the packet, we haven't had a chance to talk about it other than, you know, in a group of two, and there's, that leaves four or others that are uninformed, so using this tool, as many other cities in Texas do, we could have complete dialogue throughout the month about any topic we wanted, and then when we get to the meeting, to your point, Tom, the agenda item can be simply to do a quick overview and then vote. So I think it would shorten the meetings considerably and keep us compliant with O M A, I think this is huge.
Yeah, great, it's well worth the money. Thanks, Simeon, appreciate you doing your
Did you say, sorry, did you say, Simeon, that the one, because you had sent me a couple different things, but the one that you're suggesting, we don't have to own any servers or host it or anything, they do, right? And they, they do the backups, or we have to do the backups?
We would do the backups, I mean, they would have it backed up on their server as well, but we would do the backups. Technically, we don't have to do them, to my understanding, unless we delete something off of there, but we would wanna do our own backups. Then I called that service, they said we can do it as often as we want, there's no limitations for that.
Yeah, 'cause I think the, the, the one that I had sent you initially was sixty dollars a month, which I thought was a steal also, but fifteen is better than sixty, but just to keep the burden off of us, 'cause Josh and others are already doing a lot of stuff, and I just don't wanna add more stuff, you know, if we can have a service that takes care of itself, we just send them, you know, payment, I think that would be ideal.
So in the eight, um, services, packages that you investigated, your recommendation is the V Bulletin one, that was fifteen dollars a month and complete package?
Yep, should be complete, I mean, it's all the legal
Fifteen per person, per user, or just flat rate?
Flat rate, you can have virtually as many users as you want, like I said, we're kinda limited on who we can allow to post legally, but yeah, some of them did per person, um, but I, I don't suggest going that route, yeah, fifteen dollars flat.
So, I know Austin, um, who uses this, is, um, did you get any kind of sense of how items were presented, um, and, and at what time, and then how long, I mean, so I guess you can have any item presented, and then if, say you have four items, then you can discuss any item at any time, or did you get a sense of like, does it timeout, or how does that work?
No, it's for anything, you know, it doesn't have to be on an agenda in particular, any town business that we want to discuss, you know, it could be a citizen concern, I know there's been a lot of that, and, you know, that'd be a way for people to get something on there, is to reach out to a councilman, and then, you know, they could kinda post it for you, but, yeah, anytime.
So somebody could come to us and say, hey, I have a concern about the septic sprinklers we're proposing for the building, we could have a complete dialogue about it online, back and forth, we could present the material that Carl Crowe or somebody gives us, and, I mean, we, we're not obligated to resolve it there on the forum, but it's an opportunity for us to talk freely and openly, because everybody out here can witness it anytime they want. And that's the only other stipulation that Simeon said, is it has to be one click away from the website, you can't bury it, you know, it has to be very
So it would be a link in, in the website, but one click away, so it'd be very easily accessible, and so, um
I'd put it just right on the homepage, you know, probably really obvious, because we want to
And one of the menus, and that's why it's on every page. Is it, is it a rolling form, like a scroll top, or does it have threads where people would have to check to follow comments from this conversation?
Technically, that's adjustable, so we could do either way, almost everybody does it, you know, you'll click on the different threads, and then, you know, see all the discussion and requires, I think that's the cleanest way, that's the way I set it up on the example website, um, that's what I would suggest.
Okay, so this sounds great and all, so who's going to set this up and manage it?
I will volunteer to set it up, just because I've already done a lot of the work for setting it up, I know how the whole system works, I wanted to make sure, whenever I bought that, um, month's worth for it, I mean, it was fifteen bucks, it's nothing, but I also went back and, you know, made sure all the systems were working, so I'm familiar with adding the users, creating, I can send everybody usernames, passwords, so I'll do the setup, I don't wanna be in charge of, you know, making sure it's backed up, I'd say whoever's taking care of the website should do that, but I'll, I'll take care of the admin of setting it up.
Okay, so we have some citizens, Kevin Sinkovich, Chad McFarland.
Chad McFarland, one-nine-eight-five-oh, F M nine-eight-six, I read, uh, your report that was included in the pack, and you did a great job on that, that's, uh
Thank you.
I've, um, I've, I've used forums for twenty-plus years, and V Bulletin seems to be the most popular software system out there, and, um, I, I think it's, I've never been an admin on a forum, but just from a user point, with the limited number of users that y'all have for this, I, I don't think the admin part of it is going to be that much. 'Cause it's, and the nice thing about V Bulletin is, is, is prob, well, by your reports, it's the most popular software out there, there's probably a lot of, uh, uh, available, I don't, hacks is probably not the right word, but available support, where a lot of, I think a lot of your stuff can be automated, because some of the forums that are hosted, or that are run on V Bulletin are huge, and for a six-person or seven-person forum, this software should be, uh, fairly easy, and the, for the fifteen dollars a month, this is a no-brainer, probably just in the time it's gonna save an open records request.
Well, and there's no moderation, like other forums, right, you don't have to tell people how to behave, because it, it's, by law, it has to be just a scrolling list of everything, we can't delete anything, right?
Yeah, you can't delete anything, and the way I understand it, it'll be, you know, like, there'll be a topic on septic
Right.
And then everybody's response is after it, and then there'd be another topic on budget, and then everybody's topics after that, and there's probably ways where you can, each individual person can subscribe to the topic, so you get pinged by email, or, uh, they may even have text messaging now, uh, but where you can get a notification when a response is made on certain topics, and you could probably set it up to where you get an email when any post is made. So somebody puts a post up there, you're gonna get a notification, uh, but V Bulletin is the way to go, fifteen dollars a month, it's a no-brainer. Um, you know, I just, I, I hope it's, it's, hopefully it's easy to integrate into the website, so, thank you.
Thank you, Chad.
So who, who does manage the, um, the language and all, like, yeah, it's, it's O M A, but we don't allow it in here, so
I, that brings up a point that I was concerned about, I think there might, we might need to have our council members take a little bit of course on, um, some of this, so that we make sure that
But it is just us, it's not citizen drive.
No, it would just be
So our code of ethics
Code of ethics, council, the state rules, but I think, you know, just like, um, T M L offers all kinds of courses on, um, online type of things, we might wanna brush up on that as a council we might want to brush up on that as a council. And then secretary also, um, be involved. Okay, so, um, I have on here Tracy Hibbs next. Is that wrong? Okay, Dale Bryant, okay. Shelley Smith?
Shelley Smith, one eight seven three oh FM fifteen sixty five. Uh, my, if I remember correctly, the whole idea was that you're able to discuss things in real time and people can see it in real time, but you can't vote on anything on that. So just, you know, making that a point so everybody knows that. And I think whoever submitted the original idea deserves an award.
Hey, just to speak on real time, that's subjective because we do have jobs and...
Well, I mean, so that you, so that when you post, we can see instantly when you post. It doesn't matter if you post twenty-four hours back.
Okay.
Okay, Patrick Smith?
Will a round of applause work, Shelley?
Yes.
Patrick Smith, one eight seven three zero FM fifteen sixty five. Is this your pen?
Yes.
I think it's a great idea. And I think you did a great job on your proposal and your research, and I appreciate that. And I agree with your recommendations. I know I don't get to say that as much as I'd like to, but I'm, I'm happy to say that. I think it would do, I think ultimately, when the thing gets up and going, the meeting time should be cut in half. And then on top of that, no offense to anybody, but there's a big trust issue in Poetry Texas. And I think if all of this is online and everybody can see what the discussions are, it would go a long way to address that issue as well. Thank you.
That'd be great. Thank you, Patrick.
You know, to your point, Tara, I was looking, one of the things I sent to Simeon on this was Mineral Wells uses this. And they have a little box that everybody sees every time they go to the site that talks about the fact that Senate Bill twelve ninety-seven allows this. Who's allowed on there and sort of the basic conduct? And I think we would want something like that, just to be visible to us, but also to the citizens so they understand why they can't put things out there and why they, you know, can expect certain things. So they would want to put some little thing like that up front.
And you said it, the Senate Bill one?
Uh, Senate Bill twelve ninety-seven adds a provision to the Texas Open Meetings Act, which provides that communication between council members about public business or public policy over which the council has supervision or control does not constitute a meeting if the communication is in writing, is posted to an online message board that is viewable and searchable by the public and displayed in real time and displayed on the message board for no less than thirty days after the communication is first posted. A city is prohibited from having more than one online message board used for these purposes, may be only used by city council members or city employees that have received authorization from the council.
Okay, so that brings up another question is, I, I saw the one that it does require a password and that would be something, I guess if we were going to do this, we need to make sure that, okay, are we allowing the council, the mayor, the city secretary to participate? Or what is your, your thoughts on that?
I would say that's pretty standard is secretary and council under normal conditions. And then normally they'll make provisions for other city employees. The other one that's often there is city manager, but we don't have that.
And each of us would have a login. So I, when I logged in, it would show Mike Jaffe and my manager.
Okay.
So I mean, you, we, we might be having a terminology, um, difference. When I say council, uh, I'm talking about the, the five of us. And when I say governing body, I'm talking about the six of us. So would, and so would it be the governing body or would it be the council plus the secretary?
It would be the governing body, the mayor included. That's what you're getting.
So do we have any kind of motion on this?
Well, I make a motion, we take it. I think it's, as you said, it's a no-brainer. Amen. I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion to take action on purchasing an online messaging board forum and service for the town, um, made by Anderson, seconded by, um, Councilmember Jaffe, um, with Councilmember White, um, spearheading that and managing that. All those in favor? Okay, that passes unanimously. All right, number ten. Discuss ownership, management, and administrative authorities of our town website. So back on September first of twenty twenty, um, the domain of poetryTexas.org was purchased, um, by Mr. Kevin Sinkovich. On eleven three, um, twenty twenty, the Poetry Incorporated on, um, kind of on, um, let's see. So on a one twelve of twenty-one, um, we created, we started creating an unofficial website for the town of Poetry using the domain name poetryTexas.org. We began a Wix monthly subscription purchase at that time by myself. Um, on one twelve, it was published in line for the first time. Um, back on one twenty, we, we had purchased some email addresses under contact@poetryTexas.com. It went through the Wix partnership with Google G Suite. So there was a reimbursement when it switched over from the Wix to the Google Suite. Um, and then, um, I think on February second of twenty-one, Ms. Lori Whitten, who owned the poetryTX.org donated that. She had had that domain, she donated it to the town for the town's website use. So what happened at that time, the poetryTX merged in with the poetryT, T E X A S and they go to the same website. So, um, on May the first of twenty twenty-one, all of us were, um, elected. And then on six fifteen, the Town Council of Poetry adopted poetryTexas.org as the official website of the town. But recognizing the town had no funds, they asked myself to continue to pay for and maintain the Wix site until the town couldn't pay for it. So, and we did that. Um, is there, I think that the town didn't start paying for it beginning until, I think, December of, um, twenty twenty-one, I believe, or actually February of twenty twenty-two, um, I believe. So, um, I will say that, um, we've gotten a lot of positive comments about our website. Um, so people have told me, um, that, um, it's easy to use, that they like it, that it's transparent. Um, but is there conversation, um, from the council on that?
Yeah, uh, for them, the one that generated all this. And, and a lot of it was, was from citizen concerns. So, and, and I said it publicly then and I, and I'll say it now. I appreciate y'all's donation to the town because y'all could have sold that. Y'all had, y'all had the, the rights to that website. The question I get, I guess was going back towards security. Previous administrators, current administrators, and how we kind of, we're toddlers. We're learning how to walk, but how do we start building those, uh, those barricades to keep, uh, to keep people out? So, uh, I did find out from Benson that the, that the website or the, uh, administrator was, password was recently changed. But up until October twenty-seventh, although I was told it had been changed, had not been changed. So everything from the time of inception, well, I can't say that. Everything from the time of Catherine or Caroline till October twenty-seventh, that administrative password had not been changed. So brought up that, that started making me question the integrity and security of our, of our website.
Can I intercheck real quick this one thing? I, I just want to make the distinction between our website and our email administration. So those are two different accounts.
Okay, and, 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 and some of those were questions I have because I, I had zero IT background.
Right.
Is the website administrator able to access the email? That's totally separate.
That's totally separate.
Who's administrator on the web, on the email website, email site?
I don't know. I don't have the access to that. I would presume that Josh would know the answer to that one.
Yeah, I think Josh, because Josh set it up for us.
So Josh has done, I don't know how many hours to that, is an electrical engineer and, um, been helping the school since he was in third grade, so I don't know.
Um, there's actually three different accounts. There is the Wix site, there's GoDaddy, and then there's emails.
Okay.
All three have separate, uh, passwords, as far as I'm concerned. And they're all separate. They'll have their own people managing.
Okay, so, uh, I guess we can recognize Josh, he's done all of our IT work. And thank you for all that. So, so these questions, uh, take them at what they are. And these are, these are our city trying to build barricades from the outside, right? Um, so, um, one, our, our moving forward, a code of ethics will be coming out. And, and I think you would be included in that. Uh, Lauren would be included in that. Uh, we have to safeguard their code, code of ethics and conduct just as much as ours because they're, they're in charge of, of passwords that could change things. So anyways, that being said, uh, are you the only one with authorities over the emails?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, who, after it changed, who currently has the op, uh, authority on Wix?
Lauren and me.
Not Brian?
Uh, I...
He probably didn't know that Lauren gave me the, the password.
Lauren manages all that. I don't touch it. And she, and she does a great job, yeah. But, but when you're getting questions from the outside...
So do you have the password that recently changed?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and I don't have the password.
Okay, which I think you should.
And you're going to have four now because you're going to add the chat service.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, you want to be very careful with that one too because no editing, no deleting, backups.
Right.
Head up. You used me to comment that you think she should and I don't because I think we should all have individual accounts and one person.
Well, that's what I'm being at. So I, I feel like we need an overall, I, I think it's been coined a super administrator. And then, and then smaller administrative rights that you could...
GoDaddy has a pretty good structure for, you know, trying to separate out, you know, sub-admins. Um, other one counts, I think Wix has also some sub-admin accounts that you can set up to, you know, try to negotiate, but generally you do have one super, super admin.
How's it set up right now? It's just one admin account?
It's just one admin account as far as I, I know.
One admin account per service.
Right, okay. Yeah, GoDaddy and Wix can have sub-admins. I'm guessing other towns would have people on their payroll, like IT people that don't really change to manage as the, uh, the primary supervisor as, you know, the town changes. So maybe a secretary, the secretary always has the master password. Um, since you're a small town, don't have a lot of funds.
Right.
It's up to you how you want to do it.
It's very hard to manage. I get that.
Um, I personally, you know, you should keep that password, the chat service also into, you know, supervisor, whoever you're going to give a supervisor role to.
What, what roles, uh, do you have that someone on council couldn't serve as the email administrator?
Uh, I don't do anything for email other than setup. It's automatically backed up. Haven't really logged in other than make small adjustments.
Okay. I, I don't want us to go out and hire IT people, but just trying to build the, the bridges, right?
I, I just want to verify, as the email administrator, would you be able, I, I used to be an exchange administrator, so would you be able to get into somebody else's inbox and look at messages?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so that would exclude anybody on the council from being able to be the email administrator?
But it also, it also strengthens my point that whoever serves in that, Josh or whoever in the future, needs to be having some kind of code of conduct and ethics.
Well, generally, if you're paying someone, they're...
I get it, but we're not even paying you.
Yeah.
And someone's volunteering.
Right.
Generally, the best likelihood would be to, you know, pay someone to manage it. Then they're, you know, accountable to their paycheck.
And it's hard, it's hard to tell you things to do. But, but for instance, I mean, Carolyn Chapman, up until October twenty-seventh, still had access to our website.
The Wix.
The Wix. Not, there's not a lot there, but...
The Wix doesn't matter that much. It's the GoDaddy and the emails that matter the most.
So what could she have done? And, and, and what could she have done on Wix?
Anything that could be changed in two clicks.
Yeah.
You can change it right back.
So, so you can see the perception of security maybe. I mean, not that, because I'm, I'm dumb. I don't know what that Wix legion is, if it's, uh, if it's, uh, Legion of...
So I was under the impression that had been changed, so that password had not been... That's why I was...
It was only changed in last few weeks.
Recently.
Oh, I was told that, okay. So Secretary Teresa has been trained on Wix now so that she can help, um, upload and all of that. So, um, she also has that password.
Yeah, so since there's only one account, that's a super admin account. Uh, so we need, again, we need to break out. Um, for, I, I know there's, a lot of people here are familiar with my background, but yeah, I was the, the IT director basically for the, the Southwest Service Area at the Red Cross. I'm, I'm accustomed to doing, uh, technology policies. So I would definitely be willing to kick in and help develop policies. I did it for a hundred and twenty chapters across the five-state area, so I can do it for us.
So you've been holding that on us?
So, um, you know, that, that's, that's part of my background. I'll, I'll be happy to help do that. Uh, but it, at this point, until May, I, I can't actually be the administrator because that would give me access to, uh, you know, more than I should as a councilperson.
So, so Josh, that answers a ton of questions for me as far as administration. And I think we have something to work on there. Now to move into, that, that's really lump sum, that's management. Obviously, uh, Tara's graciously paying Lauren to, to do a lot and, and, and I don't know on your time. But ownership, uh, I have a little heartburn with ownership.
Well, if you want, most important thing is safeguarding the GoDaddy. If you can separate out that password, you know, prevent people from transferring maliciously to the website, that's probably the most important. The emails should be backed up. Um, you can always recover it, no matter who deletes it, that you should be able to recover on the, the emails on the backup side because it's archived.
Is GoDaddy...
For clarity, my, the, the GoDaddy is a registrar. And, and basically what it does, for those who are not initiated, it, it changes the, the texts that you type into your browser, uh, poetryTexas.org, into a series of numbers that computers understand. And then through those numbers, it is able to direct it to the appropriate website. And if you mess around with how that's registered, you can have it point to another website. You can have it, you, you can do all kinds of weird things. So we want to make sure that that is protected strenuously so that our website does not end up going somewhere else.
Following that would probably be the chat. You want to save up the chat's chat because you can get into real legal issues if magically that disappeared. Um, so I, what I would recommend is having a sub, sub-demand on poetryTexas.org. Have it like chat dot poetryTexas.org.
We probably have to look into that, but...
If, if it's web-hosted, if it's in the cloud, it would probably be something like poetryTexas.bboard.com.
No, 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 you, you have sub-domains. It's, it's simple.
It depends on what the, uh, the chat app will allow.
They, they, they allow it. Most people do, you know, whatever the town name and then forum and then...
Yeah, well, the, the county domain is already purchased under this. He just has the, uh, pretty much tells the domain to use chat dot poetryTexas.org.
As long as the bullet point supports that.
So, so back to the ownership. How can, how can the town of Poetry, and I put that in quotes because I want to do say the town of Poetry, own poetryTexas.org? Because right now, it's, it had, it had to be put in Tara's name.
No, it's sort of been transferred over.
It's in the town name. It's a whole separate county.
Okay, because it goes to elections dot poetry dot at gmail dot com.
Did you get this where it shows that it's in the town of Poetry and the new address? That wasn't your...
Well, that wasn't in our emails, so is that...
Yeah, that one was.
No, in our emails that we had prior to...
It, it was in the packet though.
It was in the packet, so it does clearly show...
So since our emails, you have, it's moved into the town's name?
Well, when we, we moved it over, when we got the new address. So it's now townofpoetry@five six seven one CR three twenty-three poetryTexas. The email associated with it is elections dot poetryTexas at gmail dot com.
So that needs to be changed probably, huh? That's a personal email that you have access to.
Do I have access to that?
Poetry Elections? No, only Lauren should have access to Poetry Elections.
Well, okay, or even, even more to my point, it needs to be a at poetryTexas.org email.
Okay, so then we would know.
So what do you think?
You don't want to pay extra money if you get away...
That's what I'm saying, that would, that would be extra money. And, and unless we set it up as an, I don't know if they charge us the front alias. If we set it up as an alias to the secretary's account.
Well, you just afford, afford to cost anything.
It needs to be removed from a personal email.
Yeah, it, it, it needs to be moved off of Gmail.
Okay, that's like two clicks. Yeah, I, I, I'm just saying, we're just cleaning this up, right?
So you're saying that, what, what do you think it should be moved to?
Secretary or...
Secretary or admin, IT.
Secretary?
Yeah.
Yes.
It needs to be taken from a private email.
That's fine, that's a private email.
Secretary at poetryTexas?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, maybe we should vote on that.
All right. Should we?
Well, we're making decisions.
Well, I mean, it was changed from your name to the town of Poetry already, since the email, so I don't think I can vote.
Before we vote on anything, I'd like to hear, I have some people patiently waiting, but uh we're we're getting deep into the discussion.
All right, so thank you, Josh. All right, so Kevin Sinkovich.
Kevin Sinkovich, one one zero nine zero CR twenty-four hundred. Uh I don't really have anything I can add to that, other than, in speaking with Lauren today, she wanted me to make sure I came and convey to you guys that there would be no problem whatsoever in setting up individual administrative breaks for you guys um to be able to get in. So up until, you know, the the beginning to the time, I forgot the date you just said Tara, but there was only really Joshua and Lauren were the only two people, and then a secretary got slipped into there.
Caroline.
One of the secretaries then left, and it was changed. Now, we actually got Brian involved now, there's gonna be Simeon involved. You guys could have individual, you know, individual logins, and those of course should be tracked, you know, so we know if something, I assume if something happens or something disappears or something walks in, something.
That's for instance, you're talking about the IT stuff. I I would think uh if myself or Josh had administrative rights on that Wix, we need to make sure that we can't get into what he's working on and delete that accidentally. So that would be that barrier that that administrative right should should define.
Wix breaks it out by roles.
And and yeah, I would define it.
So uh well, so that that would kind of violate what you're you're talking about, because if you're both content managers, I think that's one of the roles names, and that means, but that means that anybody who's a content manager can overwrite the work of another content manager. So we need to make sure that there's good communication that happens to to, or that everybody has a page that, you know, you stay in this area, which is kind of what I'm doing right now, putting the ordinances and resolutions up. And uh that's the only page that I'm working on, though I have access to others.
Um I'm pretty sure, and Josh can correct me, but I'm pretty sure everything is recoverable, except for, I don't quite a hundred percent understand if, you know, we'd have to, sounds like we'd have to set up um a schedule for once a month and once every two weeks or something to go in and do an automatic cloud backup of this this new uh plugin. But uh everything um today is recoverable if something unfortunate should happen, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
All right, Chad McFarlane, you're not, I guess you're passing Tracy Hibs.
Tracy Hibs, nine four four one, County Road twenty-four thirty-two. Um so let's just say, none of y'all get voted in next year. So then what happens with the website, the Wix, how how, I think that's what we need to be looking at moving forward, is how do we transfer all this information to a new government body?
We need to have a policy around it, but um that's also why I wanted, the elected officials shouldn't have the highest level of access.
I agree. Uh has anybody looked into IT solutions for any of us?
Looked into IT solutions?
Yeah, IT solutions, um I, just in my research, I was looking at other municipalities around us, and IT solutions runs a lot of their information. I think Josh and Kevin, whoever, have done a great job. I think our website is great, it's easy, it's accessible and all that, but I think we would benefit ourselves to looking at other things, so we're not caught up in a, uh what is the word I'm saying? Um. I can't think of the word, but we're we're, we don't have family members working on stuff of the city and all that stuff.
Nepotism.
There you go. Um I just think it would safeguard everybody that way, um at looking at another IT solution. And I appreciate, I mean, if we're gonna pay somebody to do it, which Josh should be getting paid to do it, um then I think we need to look at other people as well. Follow that.
Hey, thank you, Tracy. So if Councilmember Vincent, once he's no longer, he's not planning on running again, so if he's planning on not running again, he's willing to step up, I think that's a a kind of a really enticing choice. Um I don't know if the council members agree on that, but if he's willing to step up.
He hasn't volunteered yet.
I thought I heard you volunteer. You know, I used to be in charge of volunteer services at school, you should have watched out. So um, all right, so, you know, I mean, we're an infant town, I, you know, I know, speaking for myself and my son and my husband, we we've just tried to help where we can. I'm really hopeful the town will get weaned off of, you know, not just our shirt, you know, our checkbook that are are um, which it has on that front, because we have money coming in now, but also, and and we're glad to help wherever we can, and for some, that may not be very much, but for others, it may be, and we're just trying to help where we can and with a cheerful heart. Um and so um. Thank you, I appreciate that. So the goal is um autonomy, in my mind, and it always has been, and so. Thank you, Evan. So anyway, so I'm hopeful that, you know, but I I think an IT person or a or a tech person to manage the website would be pretty costly, and so if we have volunteers to help out with that, I think that would be more ideal. But we have, we have a lot of knowledgeable people in our midst who are willing to do that kind of thing, and so I think that would be my go-to, and as long as we have some some um safeguards in place, and that's why we're talking about this, I think that would be prudent. So um any other, I think Scott LaHoo, um. Okay, and Dale Bryant, he passing, and Shelley Smith. Okay. Uh Patrick Smith? Okay.
Tara, I'd like to see this, if Simeon can get us up and running on the V bulletin or whatever, maybe this is one of those topics that we try to work through on there, but we can each kind of pitch in what we think this policy, this continuity plan should look like.
That's a good idea.
And because I I agree with Terry that I don't have an issue with volunteers. We have a lot of very capable, intelligent people at our disposal in town, but but they need to be governed by some set of boundaries, right? So they don't just sort of go off on a tear doing what they want, so I think it's uh.
Okay, and so this online service would be like a workshop, which I think it, I think to your point, that that would be a very welcomed um format. Okay, so. Are we ready to move on?
Yep.
Okay. Number eleven, discuss and take action on an ordinance repealing a local sales and use tax exemption on telecommunications services and providing notice to the comptroller of public accounts for the state of Texas. Okay, so in talking with um another longtime city secretary and mayor, um they said, hey, did you know eight hundred cities in the in Texas do this? So this, at one point, to encourage cellphone use, they um they made a ordinance um saying that all cellphones are exempt from this, but then now, apparently, since, I mean, everyone's brother and the kids even have cellphones, that it's well-used, um that now we can exempt that as a town. We can choose to, through ordinance, um make repeal the local sales and use tax exemption on telecommunications services, so that would allow, you know, for eighty cents to a dollar twenty-five per cellphone, that would allow those revenues to go into the town, and a hundred percent of that could go for our roads. So I kind of just did an informal survey of of people around town and asked, okay, hey, would if you had to pay an extra eighty cents, a hundred, a dollar twenty-five on your on your cellphone bill, and you knew it went to the roads, would you be for that? And they said, well, the all of them said, and it wasn't abroad, one, the a hundred percent of them said, you know, well, yes, if it went to our roads, I'd be willing to do that. So um we do, we would have to vote on that, and um since the sales and use tax was on the ballot and it unofficially passed, this would be the great time to do that, because in December, by the end of December, we have to report to the comptroller, and that this could go in it as well, if it did pass, so that could be streamlined, so that not only could we potentially get the revenues from the sales and use in the town proper, um but also on cellphones. So um any comments on that?
Yeah, I'm just, I would like to hear from even a broader cross-section of the the town that is represented here tonight. Um I've just, I've been talking to a lot of people lately who are coming up with uh some really, really hard times right now, and I just wanna make sure that we are getting a broad feedback from our citizens to to ensure that eighty cents to a dollar per cellphone per month is is not an undue burden if it goes to our mouths, but um I just, you know, it's, to to me, it's not a a huge burden, but uh for some people who are looking at every penny, I just wanna make sure that I'm, I am uh um hearing from people from all demographics.
Since since we did lose um approximately twenty percent of our revenue with the FEC um miscommunication, um unfortunately, we, I feel like, you know, we need to somehow make that up, and so I've been trying to look at creative ways to do that, and this is one of those that um, again, hundreds and hundreds of towns across the state um do that, and um so it is.
So I have two questions. Does this, does this have a point of delivery clause in this? That we messed up with the FEC? Does it depend?
We need to make sure.
Am I standing on my front porch or my back porch when I'm talking on the cellphone?
I I think it'd be based on billing address.
Based on billing address.
But in all seriousness, what's the, what's the chance that AT&T, Verizon, or somebody like that's gonna submit that money to Poetry?
Well, in talking.
Send it to the comptroller.
Send it to the comptroller. Now, what what the secretary? Okay, so what the city secretary, and this is from Lakewood Village, um her name is Linda Ruth, very knowledgeable, she's been there for fifteen years. She actually is city secretary slash city administrator, works there full-time. She works with Mark Vargas, who has a PhD in accounting, who's been there eighteen years. These are also extremely knowledgeable, and basically, the learning curve is there. You have to, and I've already written now four letters to the district, um um the district manager, postmaster, who gets to make that decision, I'm requesting that we, if we can't, that we get poetryTexas in bulk written on our addresses, if not, if if, you know, if a change of zip code, but at least a change of the last four of the zip code. So um she has not, not had a lot of success with with that, but she did say you have to educate your citizens, um and when they order things online, to make sure that that address is poetryTexas, not Tarrel, Texas.
But not all amended, amended systems are.
Right, and so that's where, that's where the education, and that's where I'm trying to work with postmaster, and I might have to take it to the comptroller, and also even maybe even the Attorney General of Texas, because you know what, if the citizens voted for that to be approved, then my belief is that we should not see that those revenues go to the city of Tarrel. That should be able to stay in the town of Poetry. And so if, you know, whatever needs to happen to make that happen, needs to happen. So, you know, if it's the postmaster who is in charge of that, or if it's mainly the comptroller, but I I do know from her, from what she told me, was that you have to educate your citizenry, and they have to demand it when they, you know, order things online, and when, and so that will take some time.
Well, Lance just got re-elected as well. I wonder, Mr. Gooden, see if he uh can help um generate some interest in the post office.
You you know, I think, I think we discussed this at our last meeting, that one of the challenges is gonna be the software that people use for shipping and organizing and all of that, that is really outside of the control of the postmaster and others, and so it's not until, and I don't know what Amazon uses, but they have some software that, for example, won't accept poetry. If I type it in, it rejects it, because it's not seen as valid. So that software company that they contract with, it does that stuff, and there are others. I mean, it's it's gonna take, I don't think it's, I think it's doable, but I think realistically, it's gonna take a number of cycles of that software, right, maybe years.
Well, if you have, if you have even two dozen citizens requesting that, then they're gonna take a look at it. And and I think that's to her point. She says if you have citizens requesting that, to say poetryTexas, not Tarrel, Texas, then they're gonna address it. If they get bombarded with these requests, see, then they're gonna take a look at it and change it. So we need our citizens to get out there and do something constructive, complaining.
So so back to the ordinance on the table, Tara, so if we did nothing, you're saying telecommunications providers are exempt from paying sales and use tax
Correct.
in our community.
Correct.
So we we have the right to waive that, and kind of to Terry's point, section three here, it says, hereby repealed in the town of poetryTexas, you know, we need to determine, to your point, where is that? Is it the billing address, and if the structures, you know, it's kind of like we did with trash, if their driveway hits the road, or if the house is in the boundary, or what?
We are learning, aren't we?
Yeah, yeah, we don't wanna.
Okay, that's a good.
We may wanna add some clarification language around this that that talks about, and I don't know, maybe that's a comptroller decision, like they're gonna decide which businesses are in Poetry, apparently.
Mm-hmm, they.
Maybe they also decide which telecom.
They might. It it um, they very much are in the driver's seat on that, on all the decisions on that. And they will send a person to the ground. It's not just, you know, looking at it online or on a map. They send, they actually will send people to look at, um if they need to, they will send someone to come out and look at it physically on site. Um.
I would like to ask a question, though. Whenever we were first starting as a town, I was looking at the right-of-way telecommunications ordinances, pretty much, that would put this sort of tax on uh landlines, and I ended up finding out it only was landlines, and I ditched the idea, because it's mostly people that are older with fixed incomes. You really don't want that undue burden. It wasn't gonna be much for the town. Whenever I'm looking at this, you keep saying cellphones, but in section two, it says, for information utilizing wire, dioptric cables, cables or any other method now in existence that may be device included, but not limited to long-distance telecommunications services. So does that include landlines? Because you've kept saying cellphones, but by this wording, I wonder if that would be included as well.
Uh when I read it, I didn't interpret it as uh landline phones. Uh there's a, there's a lot of wires that go into wireless phones, so um the the cables uh to get to the towers, to the central offices, to the, you know, switching stations, et cetera, et cetera. Um that's how I understood to be the the telecom's infrastructure, not um the the residential phones, but I'll have to go back and re-read it in light of your question.
Okay, I I hope it's not, you know, landlines, and it would be odd if it was, because that would mean there's overlapping ordinances that you can do to pass this.
But I'll I'll also say that my parents live next door to me, and my mother-in-law lives on the other side of them, and none of them have landlines. They all have cellphones. So that that's, goes back to one of my concerns. I I think cell phone, uh cellphones have been, become the predominant means of communication, and for those people who are having to to budget out now for, you know, six dollar and um a carton eggs, uh when their only raise that they're getting is social security, which is going up at about half the rate of inflation, I just wanna be sensitive to their needs.
Okay, so citizen Tracy Hibs.
Um Tracy Hibs, County Road twenty-four thirty-two, nine four four one. Um I appreciate what you're saying, Brian, about income. Um you know, I don't think the council wants to be remembered as a council that taxed us on every single thing. We approved the sales and use tax. I voted for it personally. I think it's something that we need to help up, to help with our revenue in the town. However, I don't think we need to look at every single avenue to tax the people of the town. Um back to the cellphones, you have people out here that are using government cellphones. They don't pay a dime. You know, my cellphone bill runs three hundred and fifty-something dollars. You know, my cellphone bill runs 350-something dollars a month. So, I mean, adding another tax onto it, probably going to put it up there to $360 a month. You know, every penny counts. We do have a lot of retired people here that budget their money every month. So we need to take those things into consideration, and we're talking about adding more dollars to their expenditures every month. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thanks, Tracy.
Dale Bryant? He's going to pass. Shelley Smith? Chad McFarland?
Chad McFarland, 19850, FM 986. One question I have, if this passes, is this going to add just the 1.5%? Or is it going to add the state 6.25% to phone bills as well? Then the other question I'd have would be, which y'all have already brought it up, is about point of delivery, because the last thing we need to do is start collecting sales tax, and then six months down the road, we end up having to give it all back.
I completely agree with you.
Yes. Especially once it's already gone into the roads, that would be hard.
Just, do any of y'all know, is this adding 1.5% to the bill? Or is this adding, because it repeals the sales and use tax, does it add the, the state 6.25% to the bill as well?
I don't think the state was ever exempted. So I looked at my bill, it looked like it had the state's tax 6.25. This just would make the 1.5 for, for the rest of the town, the local environment, yeah.
Okay, so, so our bills are already taxed by the state?
Yeah, they didn't exempt themselves, I don't think. Or maybe they already repealed it, that at least my bill had, had, already had that on there.
You know, my bill's all-inclusive. My bill's all-inclusive, it's T-Mobile, it doesn't, they don't itemize taxes.
Yeah, I, I don't look at mine, I just, it's a bill, you know. So other than that, I, I mean, I'm going to disagree with Tracy. I think we need to explore every avenue of revenue, because we're going to have a property tax soon, and we might as well get everything else we can get to minimize the property tax that's coming.
Thank you, Chad. So my mind is to, I really don't, we're trying everything to avoid a property tax in my mind, and so every dollar that we can obtain to avoid that, I think is better for our citizenry.
So I do have a creative idea there, but I didn't make it before the cutoff date, so hopefully we'll get that on the next agenda to discuss.
And, okay, so Patrick, I guess he.
He waived.
He waived, okay. All right, so any other council comments on this? I think we said we want to make sure section three is firmed up. I think Councilmember Vincent said he wants to know if landlines were in that, he wants to look at that. So any other thoughts on this?
I think to answer the question, you answered it, but if we're not 100% sure exactly what this would amount to in terms of the percentage, would it simply be adding, are we sure of that, 1.5% to our current bill? Or does it take the place of?
We don't have the authority in my mind to add a state tax anyway.
Well, no, no, I just wonder how does that, what will it look like? So if you're affected by this, on your bill, you will see what? I mean.
A 1.5% sales and use tax.
For the town of Poetry, that's what I was thinking.
Well, and I don't know if they'll line item, some of them may just say local tax.
Right, well, and like Brian said, I have Cricket, they build it in, it's the same amount, so I have no idea what taxes they're collecting, because I paid the same.
And again, I think the majority of towns in the state do this. They repeal this exemption. So she said 800 towns and counting, so.
Some of them may not know about it yet.
Right, I, until she told me, until I'm asking, I didn't know about it, so.
I guess, just to be clear, this is money that goes to roads?
It has to, again, it goes into the road funds, so it has to, by state law, go 100% toward our roads and repair on roads.
So on that basis, I'm all for it, because we do need money for roads.
In my guesstimation, it would, you know, it might provide $10,000 to $12,000 a year in additional revenues, unless there's a lot more, you know, to this than I'm thinking. But, you know, she said that it, you know, it was, it was significant for their little town of 1,200 people, so.
You know, and I'm looking at, I just looked at my phone bill, and yeah, taxes and fees are separate, at least for AT&amp;T, so it would add to AT&amp;T's bill, and it looks like state tax is already in there.
Another discussion, no?
Is, is there, do you all, it sounds like you all want to ponder this.
I'm ready to vote for it. I think we should have the ordinance. I would say the downside.
I think, I think I would support it too, Tom. I just want to make sure that the section three, I don't, I don't want to give, I don't want to give $15,000 back in eight months, because we didn't.
Yeah, that was a lot of time, that was a time.
Yeah, so I think if we, and maybe you can call the people that told you about this and ask for their ordinance and see if.
That is theirs, yeah, they just don't.
Well, they probably don't have a spy web.
Right.
They might have a geometric cloud-based.
Well. So do we want to consider that pending down section three?
I think so.
The billing address. So, so section three, it says that the local sales and use tax exemption on telecommunications services hereby repealed in the town of Poetry Texas. Do we want, we want to firm that, the language that says based on the billing address of the resident, or whatever it needs to be?
Well, there's clarification on section two also, because I think to Simeon's point, to me, telecom, that's the industry I come out of, that's any kind of communication, wireless, fixed wireless, you know, wired, anything. So I think it's going to affect everything, landlines, internet.
Okay.
You know, including the CIPs, the community internet people.
Okay.
And that's all telecom, so I think they're all going to be burdened by it.
Internet.
Yeah, telecom is telecom.
Internet.
It doesn't say voice, it's telecommunications.
iPad, cellphone, okay. So we need clarification, so you're saying that you want to push this to next week?
Including satellites, satellites starting to come out, that new thing where you get the little starling. Starling, yeah, that's telecom.
What about your DCHV, DirecTV, is that going to be taxed as well?
That's telecom, it's all data. I mean, it's.
It's a movie to you, but it's.
So then.
We have multiple cellphones.
Well, we appreciate your contribution.
You see, you got a bargain on that FEC electric deal.
Now we're talking about $2 to $2.
Well, and I will mention that we had, we only have two councilmembers who are actually paying FEC electric deals, so I feel a little bit.
I'm paying.
Okay, you're paying a little bit.
Aha.
Okay, so, but it's, I think this might even the playing field a little bit. All right, so it sounds like we need to massage section two and section three and bring it back next week. Is there anyone else who feels differently?
Yes, again, I want to make sure that we hear from those people who have concerns, either way, you know.
Okay.
Whether or not it's, it's an undue burden, or whether or not it puts us a step closer to a property tax, which I avoid, I want to avoid with all my heart.
Okay, so then let's, it's cm.vinson@poetrytexas.org. If you have concerns, if you see this on video, please email him, you can email myself, but mayor.tara@poetrytexas.org, and we'd be happy to hear your concerns or comments on that.
Absolutely.
All right, so moving on to general public comments. It's only 9:31 PM.
It's amazing.
That's a victory. Okay, so be aware that on, on the general comments, we're really only supposed to respond with specific factual information residing in existing policy. All right, Chad McFarland.
If anyone else is going to speak in general comments, just come on over if you signed up.
What I handed out was the profit and loss budget versus actual that I printed up off the website. First, this is a huge improvement over in financial transparency.
Thank you, we're trying.
Yeah. The, one thing that I circled in red, the 3,900 that's listed under capital expenditures, that's what y'all spent, or authorized to spend last month on road repairs. It should be listed under 6,100, where I've got the little red check mark, because the capital expenditure, where y'all have $3,000 budgeted on that line, that's my understanding was the money that you set aside for future road, road repair, or road refurbishment.
I believe you're correct on that.
So, you know, like you said, this is a great improvement over what we've seen in the past, but it needs to be correct. Another thing, because I see similar reports when I'm on the Chamber of Commerce, my position there is, on the board, is actually treasurer. It would be good for the council if you had balances at the bottom, because at least, I haven't seen a sheet where available cash that the town has has been listed, there's been the bank balance, then you've got outstanding checks, and it's just, you can't operate that way. And I know I addressed the budget with a lot of y'all, or every one of y'all should have gotten an email from me over the past week, or a couple of weeks, but like I said, there's, this is an improvement, needs to be a little bit more information on it, and hopefully, things will continue along this way to where people have a better, the citizens have a better idea where this town stands financially. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Chad. So I agree with you on the, I'm going to try and keep this factual. So factually speaking, Secretary Caroline did not operate QuickBooks at all. Secretary Teresa started August 1st, was trying to rapidly catch up and enter a lot of the information. She's done a phenomenal job, I'm very appreciative of her doing that. It's been a goal to try and get some of this squared away. We want to be as transparent as possible, we want to, you know, be as clear as possible, you know, with the election deadlines, crazy, the FEC, reimbursements, the, all the things. You know, she's only working 14 hours a week, last week it was two because of medical issues. So we're trying as, as we possibly can, we're short-staffed, or we're, you know, very limited hours. So there are some things, and to answer, I know Jaffe's concern is, we had our budget on Excel spreadsheet, which I had done last year. We are trying to streamline that into a QuickBooks with a chart of accounts, so I had her go through with chart of accounts, and I wanted to see it make sense, where, you know, it's very clear. And that's why we have the 3,000, the 4,000, the 5,000, the 6,000. So I wanted to make sure that that was, it was clear. So we're trying to make that just as clear as possible. It looks like on the road repair and maintenance, that she put it under, she posted it in the wrong category, which she's still, which is simple to change, so thank you for that. Okay, so we can absolutely rectify that very quickly. All right, Robin is not here, Kevin Sinkovich, okay. Mike Griffin?
Right.
Okay, Tracy Hibs? Shelley, Shelley Smith? Shelley Smith? Okay, Patrick Smith? Ray, here we go, she left. Okay, and Jack Sinkovich?
You're up.
You're up. You're up, Jack. He probably couldn't, you are up.
Jack Sinkovich, 10301, County Road 2326. I would like to express my thanks and gratitude to the council, to the mayor, for all you've done for our town. I would also like to thank Kevin and Bob and Josh, the secretary, and all who donated your time and your funds to our town, and those not mentioned. Maybe next time, next year, we'll give you a raise.
Double it.
I like the way things have went tonight. It's been a lot more positive and a lot more peaceful. I hope to see more of that in the rest of our meetings. This has been more of a pleasure than some of them, and I do appreciate it.
Thank you, Jack. I agree. Okay, I think, don't faint, but it is 9:38 PM. In a turn.